We'll call the committee of the whole meeting for the Elgin City Council for June 22nd, 2022 to order. Will the court please call a roll?
Councilmembers Dixon.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Rauschenberger.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Stefan.
Here.
Thorne.
Here.
Mayor Captain.
Here. Approval of a minutes of the previous meeting of June 8th, 2022.
So moved second.
Moved the second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Rauschenberger.
Abstained.
Shaw.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Thorne.
Yes.
Mayor Captain.
Yes. Motion is approved eight zero with one abstention. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Item A is on both agendas, and this is the renewal of the property insurance program for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2022. Kelly Wazluski, the city's risk management analyst, is present, and the recommendation is to, if the council is so inclined, to pass this to the regular agenda for further discussion.
Any discussion at this time? Any questions for the manager, Kelly?
Okay, we'll visit it with the regular agenda. Thank you. Mayor, council members, there are a lot of items on the committee of the whole agenda, but I'd like to suggest a manner in which we could work through these that minimizes what appears to be a very long evening. The two items, three items on the agenda, I think, are companion pieces that we can certainly discuss before the seven o'clock break for the regular meeting. Even though they're not identified for presentations, the, we will be receiving presentations for the Elgin Area Convention and Visitors Bureau for its renewal of its purchase of service agreement, as well as the Downtown Neighborhood Association of Elgin for the renewal of its three-year purchase of services agreement as well. Additionally, Amanda Harris has a proposal for an arts and events market study and strategic planning services agreement with Create Today Consulting, and the work that is going to be performed as part of that proposed initiative will certainly mesh with the work that EACV B performs for the city and the type of events and work that the Downtown Neighborhood of Association performs. After that, when we return to the committee of the whole, I can describe the other initiatives, though, but I think the plan is, I think that we really have the ability to get through those first three items right now. So, it occurs to me that it's been a long time, two years to be, in fact, where the city's had the opportunity to hear from its economic development partners, the EACV B and the D N A. It's been a tough two years, but we know that, I think we need to be particularly proud for the work that we have with these partners. Certainly, we know the impact that the pandemic had on the tourism industry, and that, 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 the impact that that had on the EACV B was nothing less than significant. But through the stewardship of President and CEO Chrissy Lee Murphy, they made the expense reductions that were necessary to keep the Convention and Visitors Bureau afloat, and that can't be said of many other agencies in Illinois as a result of that. Certainly, the city council is aware of the work that we've performed with the Downtown Neighborhood Association during the pandemic, the initiatives prepared by the council, creating ordinance amendments and different amenities to help our downtown businesses enable D N A, city staff to weather through those two years of tribulations, and it's, again, through that hard work that we've got the opportunity to talk about continuing those partnerships for a few more years. So, to begin the evening, it'll be Chrissy Lee Murphy and representatives from the EACV B to start the discussion. Jennifer Fukala and D N A representatives will follow after that, and we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, so much for having us back. As Rick said, it has been a while since we've been able to come up and talk to you guys about our efforts. It has been an extreme time over these last two years, but we have made it through with significant increases in our tourism for the area. So, we're going to kind of walk you through some of that. So, last time we were up here, our team was a little bit different. So, I wanted to kind of tell you who we have on our team now. We have Ryan Cortez, who's our sales manager, lifetime Elgin resident. We also have Lee Hewenberg, who, if she looks familiar, familiar, she's also your guys' part-time events coordinator. So, we are continuing our close relationship with the city in those efforts. Thank you to our board members. We do have our board chair, Angela Johnson, who works for Bass Hospitality. They own and operate Hampton Inn here in Elgin. We have, I don't think Liz has walked in yet. Councilmember Rose Martinez is on the board. Thank you. Molly Gillespie, your guys' communications manager. We have Eric Larson with the Elgin Youth Symphony Orchestra, and then Terry Gadeuse, I'm gonna, sorry, excuse me, thank you, from the Elgin Area Chamber, and then Jennifer Fukala from the Downtown Neighborhood Association. So, since everything has happened, we've also kind of changed our role of getting more involved on the state and regional level to make sure that we are able to bring as many resources into Elgin as possible. So, walking you guys through some of the boards that we are voting members of, we have the Illinois Council of Convention and Visitor bureaus, Elgin History Museum, Alignment Collaboration for Education Operating Board, as well as the South Elgin Economic Development Team. Some of the committees that you will see us on, Illinois Office of Tourism's Marketing Committee, the Regional Economic Recovery Task Force through CMAP. We have the Market Illinois, which I'm the ICCB liaison for, Sports Illinois, the Three Fires Camp Big Timber Marketing Committee, Elgin Parks and Recreation's Master Plan Steering Committee, Enhancing Elgin Through the EDG, the D N A Promotions Committee, and then the Elgin Hispanic Network. We also have our quarterly meetings that we keep up with all of our hoteliers in Elgin and the surrounding area, as well as the Elgin Area venues. I really want to focus, I'm going to give you guys a little bit of recap, but we really want to focus on what we have for the future. We are very excited to move past everything that COVID has thrown at us and get aggressive in the sales market. So, we're going to talk a little about, about that, but I really want to show you some of the higher-level stuff that we've done in the last year and a half. So, we created the joint Elgin, Explore Elgin commercial with your City of Elgin staff. That one played at the Marcus Theater in December, which happened to be a big month for releases. So, that was here locally to try to create some Elgin pride. This is the key component in a lot of our digital campaigns that we did last year, and we will then again be doing more ads this year to make sure that we're keeping that commercial running. We launched a campaign focused on 14 itineraries. What we noticed is visitors really wanted us to plan their trip for them, make it easy so they're not having to go and plan every little detail. So, that's where this came in. Over the River and Through the Burbs, that would be the ad you guys see up there for the arts. We had multiple different components to that one, but we had 37 print ad placements, 32 digital ad placements, and 18 editorial articles published just for that campaign alone last year. We hosted eight travel writers or bloggers. These people came out and told our story to visitors, whether it was in the Chicago market, we had someone from Michigan, really trying to get other people to talk about Elgin and why it's great. So, that, that was, resulted in 21 articles. We also brought back Explore Elgin Area Lights for the second year. We had 27 homes and almost 1,000 votes on the best light displays. This was created during COVID to give families a safe way to get out, still celebrate the holidays, creating memories, and exploring our community. We were part of supporting Elgin Parks and Recs, the heart of our community, as you guys' industry banners. So, oh, hold on, I'm hitting buttons up here. So, we worked with the staff to create a 10-month content calendar, and now we are helping them to publish those. These placements will end leading up in November when they have their larger event. And then we were also able to win two state awards recently at the Governor's Conference in December for Best Website for ExploreElginArea.com, and then for Best Branding Campaign. This was our effort to make Ring Around Elgin, make Elgin a destination for weddings. And then I'm going to have Brian step up and talk about some of his bigger wins. If you want to see all of the wins, these are those quarterly reports that we send you guys has everything listed in there.
Thank you, Chrissy Lee. So, as the city manager mentioned earlier, it was a tough time for tourism during the pandemic to get people to travel to the Elgin area, but despite the pandemic, there was a couple of big wins that we would like to share and highlight to the city council that we were able to bring recently to the Elgin area. And number one is the North American Caribbean Women's Handball Tournament, which is held by USA Team Handball that actually goes and plays in the Olympics every four years. They chose the center of Elgin to host this tournament that rotates throughout North America every four years, and we were happy to not only welcome them, but teams from several different North American countries to play in a safe fashion during a pandemic in a way that resulted in zero COVID cases and were able to put in the tournament in the format that USA Team Handball and the rest of North American Caribbean handball wanted to as well. We also want to highlight that we brought the American Cornhole League here. Yes, that game that we all play at tailgates or in the yard for fun in summertime. There's actually a real professional league for that with professional players, and they were looking for new places to play coming out of the pandemic, and we were able to connect with them and sell LifeZone 360 in West Dundee and the Elgin area as a destination that they have to come and play in. And that tournament went so good that they came back a second time and had another tournament at that same venue. And then another one, a little bit different, not necessarily in sports, but in events, is the Progressive International Motorcycle Show. That is the nation's largest motorcycle trade show, and that is an event that we actually convinced to come from Rosemont at the Stevenson Convention Center to Goldberg's Farm out in Pingree Grove and transitioned from being an indoor event to an outdoor event. And that was held for the first time as an outdoor event last year, went very well, was put on hold for this year, but plans to return back in the summer of 2023. So, these are multi-year deal partnerships in events and tournaments that we're working with and have developed since the pandemic started. And exciting as well is we have a brand-new sport coming to the Elgin area in about two weeks at our sports complex. It's called Spikeball. I highly recommend you guys looking it up online to get an idea of what Spikeball actually is. It's one of those college sports that turned into an actual professional league, and they have over 75 teams registered right now to be coming, playing at the Elgin Sports Complex on July 9th. If anyone's able to attend in person, I highly recommend it because it's a really cool sport to see in person. So, we're very excited to be welcoming them in a few weeks for the first time to the Elgin area. And we also want to highlight that things such as trade shows, which are big sales efforts and opportunities we use to connect with event directors, tournament directors, and other colleagues throughout the nation and build those relationships, that's where all these conversations really start, is through trade shows, because those are, those are better than unanswered emails and unanswered voicemails. When you're able to meet with people in person and talk about what the Elgin area has to offer, that's when you're best able to sell the Elgin area to those that are unfamiliar with it. So, we've been able to attend a couple of those since we've come out of the pandemic, but there's a lot more that are now coming back now that in-person events have returned throughout the nation. And we also want to highlight one of our big social media efforts, and I say community efforts, that the sales department took over this year back in May during the first week of the month. We held the Elgin area each week, which is how, when we partnered with restaurants, not just in Elgin, but the Elgin area, to help come up with unique promotions or special menu items for that week only, to draw business to their establishments as they look to continue to recover out of the pandemic. And I'm happy to say we had over 40 local restaurants participate in Elgin area each week, and it's something that we look to continue going forward in future years. Thank you.
Good job, Ryan. All right. So, moving on into the strategic plan now. There we go. All right. So, strategic plan, looking forward, we recently contracted with the company to come in, look at all the strengths, weaknesses of the area of the C V B, and kind of figure out where we need to go moving forward. They came up with two different categories that they wanted to really have us focused on. A lot of this was brought up by business owners. This was brought up by all the people that kind of played into this. So, we're going to show you this, but I do want to really stress the fact that a lot of these efforts, you're going to see in the D N A's plans for the future, you'll see in Amanda's presentation, we really are trying to be the community partner that kind of pulls all of that together. So, I think you're really going to like seeing all that. So, the process, we brought in the company, they had stakeholder interviews, they did a community survey, a board retreat, then we approved the plan, and now we're working on the marketing communications plan. So, usually when we present to you guys, you guys see our marketing communications plan. That's usually in September. The board will approve that in August, and then I will get that out to you guys so you can see all of those metrics as well. So, the participants for all of this, we really wanted to make sure that we were covering the entire scope of our job. So, we had City of Elgin staff, elected officials. Thank you, guys, for all of you that actually came in and did those one-on-one interviews. That really meant a lot. We had Kane County staff. Our hoteliers came in and had a very long session where they sat down and went through everything they dealt with, with COVID, and what they want to see moving forward. We also had here key area attractions, area business owners, and I do want to say a special thank you to the Downtown Neighborhood Association that put the survey into their business buzz. We had a very strong showing of downtown ideas. So, what we did is kind of worked that into the plan with the support of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. And then the residents. We sent this out to the different resident or the neighborhood groups that got it out to the residents. So, we saw that as well. So, the first part of this was really creating our purpose, vision, and mission, and I apologize, but I'm going to read these because our team put a lot of effort into making sure that these words reflected exactly who we want to be moving forward. So, the purpose, Explore Elgin Area exists to collaboratively share the pride and story of the region with everyone in order to enhance the community's quality of life. Our vision, Elgin area will be known for its diverse, historic, and authentic culture, welcoming visitors for memorable experiences. And then our mission, Explore Elgin Area is to collaboratively advocate for the thoughtful development and promotion of the region and stimulate the economy through tourism and create a sense of place for residents. This is something you're going to start to see more and more. What COVID really did was helped us to realize we're doing a great job getting the visitors involved, but as your guys' marketing agency that is really putting together campaigns and all these things, that works for residents, creating that sense of pride. So, we've really started to look at residents as well. So, the first step of this was destination development, and I'm not going to go into too much details with all these because I know that I've shared this with you, but objective A is to continue to support the expansion of tournament-grade sports facilities throughout the region. I know this is a topic later on in the meeting, so I won't go into too much details with that one, but this is also why we're on the steering committee for the master plan, really making sure that as you guys are starting to plan for parks and mainly the sports complex, you guys are keeping the visitors in mind. Objective B is to support the development of festivals and events as destination magnets. This plays into what Amanda's about to present, but for us, what we really want to look at is how do we take some of the events that are currently happening, support them so they can become multi-day events so that we're able to start attracting that overnight visitor. Objective C is to support the reinvigoration of the riverfront, riverfront and bike trail. The riverfront and the bike trail were huge destinations during COVID and as we're coming out of or hoping to come out of COVID. So, we want to continue to put some efforts into that and partner with all the other C V Bs along the Fox River Trail. Objective D is to encourage local and state governments to enhance the corridor development. That also comes into what you guys are talking about with the sports complex later, but really making sure that when we bring visitors to the area, they're getting a welcome and inviting experience from the beginning to encourage them to stay longer and explore more. And then objective E is to collaboratively support efforts to stimulate our communities. And with that one, what we're doing is we're trying to advocate for more destination-type stuff, whether it's a destination park, a destination business, or a destination event, like really starting to look at those bigger pictures. The next part of that was destination alignment. So, objective E, build community awareness, appreciation, and support for the local visitor economy and explore Elgin. This is really our board's initiative to try to just tell our story. Objective B, support a more collaborative relationship with other regional community development organizations. So, when we did our one-on-one meetings, silos came up a lot. So, we need to do a better job of telling everyone how we're working with the Chamber, the Downtown Neighborhood Association, and the city. So, that's something we wanted to really prioritize next year. And then the last one, objective C, work with community governments and organizations to enhance the area's image. This is just us doing more of telling our story, whether it's to the residents or whether it's to businesses coming in. So, what's next? Some of the industry trends, just to give you a quick, what we're working with right now, leisure and sports marketing returned the fastest. We, as Ryan was saying, we had tournaments that were ready to book in the smaller capacity right away. We're starting to see those move into the bigger tournaments that are filling up our facilities, which is wonderful. Weddings continue to make Elgin a destination. This is a sign with Ashbury just having the ribbon cutting last week. We know that this is going to continue to be the bread and butter for the area as we're also doing the tournaments. Business travel is slow to return, something that we just are keeping in mind as we're moving forward. And then one thing I really wanted to point out, so middle of everything, the Illinois tourism campaign that they just announced with Jane Lynch is very exciting. That was actually all planned. It was all taped. Everything was done in 2020. It was paused, obviously, when COVID happened, and now the state is 100% in, putting additional money into that campaign. So, not only are we going to get more aggressive, the state's going to get aggressive in trying to capture back our audience. So, how are we going to do this? Our focus moving forward for promotions, we're going to do the monthly website content for visitors and residents. We are going to continue promotion of Explore Elgin Area being the hub of events for visiting, for visitors and residents. With that being said, we're finally back over 550 events on our website, and it's going to continue to go. So, this is where we're really promoting ourselves as Elgin has something going on every day of the week. We are back to what we were for, which is wonderful. And then additional promotions to build community pride with the residents. Sales focus, we are about to announce increased niche advertising, so it'll be a 12-month campaign all about sports. So, we're going to do online ads, we have digital ads, we're going to work with some drone companies and actually do some of our bigger venues that we're going to be able to use for our sales efforts there. Increased sports trade show attendance, as Ryan said, trade shows are back, so we're going to start sending him to more trade shows to meet more and more people. Increased sales software for sports leads, so Ryan has software that he's able to log into. It tells him all of the tournaments right now that currently have opens for bidding. So, we're going to continue to invest in more of that software. And then new this year, we're going to do a sports incentive program. So, this will be targeting those groups that have more than 200 rooms. A lot of our competitors are back in it, and they're doing bid fees. We're not large enough to do that, so what we're doing is our way of it. So, it's, if you have 200 hotel rooms, we will give you an incentive of a certain amount of money. We have a contract all drawn up. You have to, it's a rebate program, so you actually have to book those rooms. We're going to hold them to those rooms to make sure that we're actually getting them. And then the last one, creating additional resources for weddings in Elgin. Now that our destination is growing as this big wedding spot, we have all these little things that are coming up that we didn't know was an issue prior to that we're now going to have to step in and make meetings with, just trying to really help the venues, the hotels, as we go through these growing pains. So, measuring results. Destination's International Event Impact Calendar is something we're going to be investing in this year. So, this will allow us to look at the visitor impact from sporting tournaments and events such as Nightmare on Chicago Street. It will take all of the data from sales tax to hotel tax and a couple other data points, put it in the software, and give us a number that we're able to move forward with as economic impact. This is us taking it one step further. When you guys get our reports, we're doing it based on only hotel rooms. This is us kind of growing into that. We've started looking into additional software that'll go even deeper and be able to track people's credit cards, which is kind of the next step of this whole process. We'll be able to know, if someone that goes to the farmer's market, how much dollars are they actually spending in our community before they leave. If we want to track three years back, or Nightmare on Chicago Street, back to 2018, all that data's available. That's a much more expensive product, so we need to build into that, but we know that starting with this first one is where we're going to start being able to give you guys that data that you guys want to see. KPIs. So, with everything we present to you guys, and then we send in all of our state stuff, well, they'll send us where our actual KPIs are for them. Those are usually a lot higher, so we just keep going with their trends. So, KPIs, we're going to increase our sales leads, increased booked business, the success of the sports incentive program that I just talked to you guys about, we want to make sure that we're actually allocating all of that money. We want to make sure that our hotels are seeing all of those rooms being booked, so we can know it's a success. Increased website numbers, this is still one of the largest metrics that the state judges us on, is our website numbers. So, we need to keep that in mind. And then increased engagement on social media. What we noticed during COVID was how many residents started getting on our social media and then going to our websites. So, we want to continue to monitor that number so we can continue to talk to our residents one-on-one. And that's all I got. I went through fast. So, any questions you guys have?
Any questions from the council? Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll kick it off. First off, great job. I can see why you won an award for one of the best websites because your presentation was also beautiful. So, kudos to you all for that. I was able to participate in this planning process over the pandemic. I came in a couple of times, tag team one time with Tish, and then it came on later on another time, and we had a one-on-one. We kind of talked about things. And so, I really, really appreciate the thoroughness that you went, and the way that you went about gathering the info and really listening and taking that feedback. I'm kind of going to jump around, but at the end, I feel like you saved the best for last because I'm always talking about, but how do we prove it? How do we show the results? We need the data. And so, you were really just speaking to my soul when you were saying, we're going to build out this software so that we can tell that story, so that we can track people, so that we can just move strategically when it comes to that a little bit better in the future. So, I love that. I want to ask you a question about, and this is just my words, maybe not yours, but overlapping strategic goals with our other service providers. Can you expound upon that a little bit?
So, when we did the surveys, a lot of data came back, and it was stuff that wouldn't necessarily affect us, but it affects our visitors. So, now it's in our scope. So, we need to expand our scope a little so that we're able to assist them while still being able to, not stay in our lane, but stay in our lane. So, we're giving the support that the other agencies need to be able to, I'd say, just expand on what they're doing as well. But we're really trying to be that partner that's in the middle. We're addressing, we put some of these things in the strategic plan, knowing that it's a community issue. We want to put it on there so that our board knows they need to focus on it, too. So, they might not be hands-on like these other organizations, but they do need to keep track of it.
Yeah. And that's great. And I remember the last time we came up, when you came up and we discussed this, and I specifically was asking for, how are you guys working together, right? You're all, you all fall under economic development, so it only makes sense for you to be working together in some way, shape, or form. So, I'm really, really happy to hear that that's happening right now. And I knew that was happening before tonight because, you know, I listen and I have these conversations with folks and I hear things. And so, I'm just really happy to see that as a part of your, your three years. And getting to the three years, I'm also happy to see that it is a three-year, and that then for D N A is also going to be a three-year or two as well. So, I think that we're like, we're, it's progression. We're getting to the point to where we are really revving this thing up, and we're just getting started. So, I'm really, really happy with what's being presented tonight. I have a question about aggressive sales. You mentioned that, you, going into this plan, you have a different kind of focus when it comes to aggressive sales. Can you actually articulate what you mean when you say aggressive sales and who you're going to be selling to and how you're going to be doing that?
Yeah. For, for us, especially coming out of the pandemic, what we found an avenue for is unique sports, unique ideas, unique events. You guys know we have places like Sports Complex, we have the Center of Elgin, that can host basketball, can host soccer, softball, all those traditional sports we grew up playing. But there's new avenues out there that a lot of people aren't aware of until we do our research to find them and then tell them what Elgin's all about. Because while we still have a lot to learn about them, they don't know too much about Elgin either, and how we can use our sports complex to host something like Spikeball, or use our indoor arenas to host something like Cornhole, which is traditionally outside. So, for us, it's looking at those nichier markets that we're not competing with Rosemont for, the city of Chicago, Rockford, Aurora, or other places throughout the state, throughout the nation, that are looking to also grow a presence in the Chicagoland area. And they see Elgin as that destination that's in that great location because we're easy to get to transportation-wise, and we not, aren't necessarily the same price as if you were to be in downtown Scott or be in a place like Rosemont or Shaw. So, for us, it's continually going after those nichier markets that we may have not ever spoken to before or thought about, but at the same time, keeping pace with the more traditional sports that our sports complex is used to hosting as well. So, it's broadening our scope of what we can host here in So it's broadening our scope of what we can host here in Elgin. And another good example of that is the motorcycle trade show we have at Goebert's Farm in Pingree Grove. We now have a pumpkin farm hosting a motorcycle trade show. That's something that took a lot of thinking outside the box on how to make that happen, and how to show them that all this beautiful outdoor space could be a great replacement for an indoor convention center, as we're looking to be more health and safety-conscious going into the future. So those are the type of aggressive sales tactics that I'm using, that Chrissy Lee also shares with me as well, and ways we can grow our list of clientele and what actually happens here in Elgin, besides what we may know as traditional in sports tourism.
And then the one last thing I do want to add to that, and I don't know if we're public about this, but when COVID hit, I did not lay off any of my staff as far as their goals. They were all pushed to hit those goals or exceed them. So even during COVID, we did not cut a break to anyone. It's like if you cannot book a tournament or a meeting now, then book it in two years, because you still have to hit those goals. So that's what I mean by that. And then we're going to do another uptick July 1st of increasing those goals on top of that, so.
Wonderful. When I'm up late at night and I'm scrolling on my phone and I'm going through my social medias, I'm seeing your advertisements. I'm getting your emails, not just to my city email, but to my personal email, because I sign up there. And so I'm getting all of these, right? And we oftentimes will talk about, well, people in, on the west side of town, you know, they go up and down random road and they leave the city for things, right? But I just want to frame, frame this next thing and just give this some perspective. So Elgin travels, okay? And so when you're talking about going out to Goebert's, you're talking about Life Zone 360, these are places that are not in the city, but it's heavily marketed inside of the city. So we leave the city, maybe to go somewhere else, but when we do, we leave with compliments of how great our city is, and those same folks are affected because they're now touched and saying, you know what, Elgin is not such a, what, 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 what? You know, not even going to say, don't put that out there, right? But I think that's just really important, that, you know, even, it's an Elgin-area convention and travelers bureau, and although it's not everything in Elgin, it still benefits us on the back end. So continue the great work, wonderful job. I love that you just pointed out that you kept the goals where they needed to be, and you challenged your staff, and they rose to the challenge, so keep up the great work. Thank you.
Ms. Powell.
Thank you, Mayor Captain. Thank you for the presentation. I too appreciate the work that you're doing and received some, some kudos about you from some of our business owners in the downtown that definitely appreciate the work that you do, as well as that the DNA does. A couple of questions I had from your presentation, which, by the way, great job speeding through that, but giving us a lot of information.
Thank you.
How, do you track the hotel stays in Elgin for events that are outside of Elgin? Like, for example, the, the Goebert's event with the motorcycles? I'm assuming, you know, obviously that's not in Elgin, but just kind of visually thinking about where those people would stay when they come here?
Yes. So actually, a lot of these events that we put on there, Elgin is the winner for those. They end up winning those hotel rooms. So just because the event is not in Elgin, does not mean those hotel rooms are not in Elgin. So we do track those. We know exactly which hotels each of these are going to. But yeah, Elgin usually wins those. Weddings, it's a split between the communities. But for most of these people, they think that the properties in West Dundee that are right across from our Elgin properties are in Elgin. So they don't really decipher the difference, we do, and those we report on.
Great. The other question I had was, do we track from year to year the improvement or losses in various areas in terms of, hey, we attracted 25% more sporting events, or 25% more weddings, things like that, that, you know, your, your, your strategic plan kind of highlights in terms of what you're focusing on?
Yes, yes. So we have to report, those go into those quarterly reports we send you, because we have to report to those, to the state. It used to be every quarter, this fiscal year it's actually changing every month. So we will be doing those every month. So we track exactly where they're going, and the only ones that end up in those reports that we send you are business that we have personally put in. Even if we touched them and they ended up at a hotel, but we didn't help with that, they don't end up on our reports. So we're very particular about what we actually put into those. So yes.
Great. And I do read your reports, but I'm also asking these questions for the general public, because they don't always necessarily see those reports. But, you know, to that point, you know, when people want to ask about, well, why do we fund, you know, this entity, or why do we fund DNA? You know, how can we do a better job about just explaining and, and kind of touting your successes and what you do, just to our Elgin residents? I, I think we, we need to look at how we can do a better job about that, because when people ask, well, you know, what do they really do for Elgin? We can point to those types of things, and I think that we can do a better job of kind of putting that out there, and, you know, that's something hopefully that staff and, and EACV can kind of work on together. The last thing I, I had was a little bit of what Corey, Councilman Dixon.
Corey's fine.
Thank you. This is a committee of the whole, so it is supposed to be a little bit more laid back. So one of the things that Brother Corey down here said, the KPIs. Do we try to, because I know I, just thinking about that screen, you said to increase certain areas, yes, increase sales leads, increase book business. Do we add like a, a set amount of an increase that is our goal, kind of like a sales goal, like you probably have for your, your staff? Is it 25% more leads? Is it 50% more leads? Basically, how are we measuring success?
So that all comes in the marketing communications plan that I will get to you guys as soon as it's approved. But those numbers come from the state, so they give us a percentage every year that we have to increase our goals by in order to keep our funding. And not just keep our funding, but this year, our funding went up. We had a lot of our counterparts that lost 3% to 40% of their budget, their state grant. We, we increased this year. So we have those numbers, those metrics, that the state holds us to every year. So that's what we do internally, is start putting those through them all. And I will definitely share those as soon as we get them.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Chrissy Lee and Ryan, it was a nice presentation. I'm not sure if I heard this right, but the increased website numbers is what the state looks at, right?
Correct, yes.
So congratulations on your best website and best branding.
Thank you.
Okay. And I looked at your presentation, and I know you do a lot of things, and people can't even imagine, but I have a question to ask you. What are the three accomplishments you are most excited about that you achieved in the last, let's say, 12 months?
Okay. I think the first one, going back to the awards, because it's just fresh on my mind, thank you. Back-to-back governor's conference, we've won awards both years now. So we won the Explore Elgin branding campaign that we did alongside the city of Elgin the year before, and then this year with the website and the Ring Around Elgin, the wedding destination. I'm going to say the creative sales efforts that Ryan is doing. There are so many of our competitors that are larger in size, that are able to go after these sporting tournaments. So us being creative and going after, what is that called? What's that one event you were talking about with the volleyball and the head?
Tech volleyball.
Tech volleyball. I mean, there are some really unique ones out there that you really have to, like, look for. But yeah, so us being able to contact some of these people, and it's not a market that a lot of people are going after, we're going to be able to make Elgin unique. That's what we've tried to do as a whole for so long, is try to set ourselves apart from everyone. I think this is just one more way to do it. I think that's two. So watching our website numbers grow over the years and seeing how much of that traffic is now turning into Elgin being local, still not our number one audience, but seeing that number rise up there and seeing that the residents are seeing us as a community asset has been a long-term goal of ours, and being able to actually see that materialize, I think is a huge success. So I think those three.
And looking at the presentation, I just wanted to clarify, wasn't sure about this, but if groups must stay in Elgin area hotels, or Elgin hotels in order to be part of that sports incentive program, so do they have to stay in Elgin, or how does that work?
Yeah. So with the incentive program, we're using Elgin hotel dollars. So in order for them to get it, they have to stay in our Elgin hotels. If they stay in a West Dundee property or any other property, they are not eligible for that rebate. We're hoping to grow this, so every other community wants to invest in this in the future, but for now, this is solely an Elgin program. So they must stay in Elgin for those.
Wow, that's cool. Well, before I forget, Ms. Martson, she went ahead and snuck in, but she's also on our board.
Yep.
And then, how did you get the tournaments and the sales recap to come to Elgin? How did that happen?
A lot of hard work and effort and start. And for us, it's, it's really constant engagement and, you know, following up with them, you know, really selling to them what the Elgin area has to offer, and not only providing emails and phone calls, but visual presentations, setting up times for them to come visit the Elgin area, to see the sports complex, the center, Life Zone 360, see those places in person to get a better idea of what they look like, and then also see what Elgin, the Elgin area has to offer while they're here, because they were always looking for things to do when they're not playing. And it's using those new sales tools that a lot have gone digital over the years, that we weren't necessarily members of prior to, at least my joining, the Elgin area convention visitor bureau. So getting on those digital sales platforms that are great sales resources to find tournament directors and event directors that are saying, I have this event, I'm looking for a host destination for it, and I'd love to be in the Midwest, or I'm just looking for somewhere in the, in the United States, or I'm looking for this specific type of venue, and I know the Elgin area has that to offer. Then I reach out to them, instead of waiting for them to necessarily maybe come to us, and just stay in that constant communication. And I know that sometimes, just because I talk to them, doesn't mean they're going to come to Elgin tomorrow, but they could be coming a year from now. It could even be two or three years from now, but they're eventually going to come. And that's the, the biggest thing that we look at, is establishing some type of relationship first, and then showing them how, even though we don't have that giant arena or stadium, this is how we can still fit their needs, and fit not only the needs of them, but of the teams and the families that participate in their events, so that when they come, they know that they're going to want to keep coming back every year, not only because of what Elgin has to offer, because of the services and the relationships that we've built with them, and they know, they can always count on us as part.
Great. I'd love to challenge you guys, and you guys just impressed me with your creativity. Thank you. I think you both, everybody has done a very good job. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Ms. Roche-Burger.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I just want to highlight and congratulate you, or applaud the collaboration that has moved forward with the other organizations. I think we've talked about that for a long time, and it's happening. And I think that makes every one of the organizations stronger. Thank you.
Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and, and all the work you put in before this. Piggybacking on what Councilmember Dixon said, the strategic plan process that you kicked off, I think helped prime the pump a little bit for what we're going to be embarking on. And that was one of the themes that came out of our conversations, is, you know, all these different groups that we have here tonight are working towards similar goals. And I'll get to that point next, I guess, but, you know, to the point of talking to members of the public and expressing the value of this organization. I, I believe you gave me some economic impact numbers from, I don't know exactly which year it was, but you, I know you're going to get more specific with those, but do you have general economic impact numbers, say, on an annual basis?
We do. So we're actually coming to the end of our fiscal year in, next week. So we will have our quarterly reports to you guys a week after that, and two weeks after that, you guys will get our full year recap. So yes, those will come out.
Excellent. Do you have a ballpark sense of where those will end up at?
I can get back to you.
Okay.
Sorry.
And then to, to the second point, the collaboration aspect, again, something that we've talked about is, you know, how does it actually happen when we say we're going to collaborate? And so is there, after your strategic planning process or conversations with other partners, do you have an emerging method or platform that you're seeing emerge between the different organizations to coordinate these marketing campaigns and trigger when, you know, the handoff happens?
I, I think you'll hear more about this in the DNA's presentation, for sure. But I know as soon as the strategic plan was done, I presented it to their board. So I know that we're already starting down that process, so as they're making those plans, we're already getting those wheels turning. So, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Thor.
Thank you. Chrissy Lee and Ryan, just want to congratulate you on a job well done, great presentation. And to use the words of my colleague, Mr. Dixon, you are advertising how great our city is, and that's what I like. I love Elgin, we all do. But it's great to see someone like yourself, your team, that is reaching out in all areas to bring people here to see what we are and what we have. And I just want to commend you. Thank you.
Anybody, anything else? Just, I'd like you to take just a couple minutes, and, you know, people move to this community every year, probably, and every couple of years, we probably change 10% of our population. Explain how the Elgin area convention and visitors bureau was funded, and it's not just the city of Elgin. We talk tonight like it's just the city of Elgin putting on this program, and it's not that. So explain that a little bit, so people that moved here understand.
So the bigger picture, the majority of our budget comes from the state of Illinois, which, as I said, is on an increase this year. So that number went up even from last year. Then we receive a portion of hotel tax from the city of Elgin. We receive a portion from West Dundee, and that rounds out our budget. But we also do things like the visitors guide that we have to add sales in, which is even up from any other year we've had it. So we're definitely seeing the increase in those type of, type of events, so. Yeah. Is that enough? Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. We're going to need a motion to approve.
We do. Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval, any further discussion? Hearing none, court please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 9-0.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up this evening is Jennifer Fukala, Executive Director of the Downtown Neighborhood Association of Elgin, and I see Steve Price, the Board Chair, at the podium with her as well. Good evening, Jennifer. Good evening, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. Give me just a moment.
Jennifer, I'm going to interrupt you here for just a second. We're going to run into a time crunch in about 15 minutes. So I want to make sure that you get adequate time to do your program, but I want to have a break at 7:00, because we can move on to the rest of the meeting. And yours could take as long as this, 45 minutes to an hour. So however you want to break this up, but just look at taking a break at 7:00.
Okay.
All right?
I think I can get through my presentation in 15 minutes.
Okay. And then we can come back for questions and discussion after, after the break. Okay.
I'm not sure what happened to the touch.
Went to overload.
It's so bad. Is that oyster? Oyster?
We can do that.
So, hi, Steve. Hi, Jen. I'm going to suggest, so instead of stopping, we lost this time. I apologize for that. We can go out of order on the agenda. So the suggestion is to give you uninterrupted time at the podium for discussion with the council. Let's postpone this, and we'll go through some of the other items, if that's okay with you?
Okay.
All right, thanks. Appreciate that. Okay. And what I'm going to do, Mayor, is I'm going to hold on the arts and events marketing study.
Go to item E.
So I can go follow that, and we're going to go right to item E. Thank you. And this is a professional services agreement with the Smith Group for the proposed improvements at the Elgin Sports Complex. And let me get to the right area over here. Okay, so we all know the sports complex is a 407-acre facility, home to several sports activities, not everything that's involved with Ryan, just golf, soccer, softball, volleyball, and BMX racing at the moment. The most recent addition to the complex adds 87 acres on the Far East area so that we have creating an exit to Illinois Route 31 at U.S. Route 20. A conceptual plan for these 87 acres was developed in 2017, envisioning multipurpose fields that can be configured for a variety of uses. The plan also includes many additional amenities, including an indoor sports facility. The proposed development that the council has before them tonight comprises two synthetic turf fields, and this was approved during the 2022 budget. This fulfills the community demand for soccer and other programming, but also brings the city closer to its vision for the highest and best use of these 87 acres. Lighting is planned to be installed to maximize the use of these fields, and fencing will enable controlled programming of the space. Additional infrastructure improvements contemplated with this project include the demolition of the former Elgin Mental Health Center Administration building, commonly known as 600 South State Street, along with the building commonly known as the Rayco Center. Also, constructing a roadway that will enable eastern access to the, from the sports complex to Illinois 31 will provide sports complex visitors with convenient access to the city's downtown, serving it as amenity for tourists visiting the sports complex for tournaments in the future.
I'll move to remove from the table.
Yes, it does.
Second.
It's been moved and second to remove from the table.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Now for a vote on the proposal.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Mr. Shaw.
Just a clarification. I know we tabled this. Maybe just a quick overview of why we tabled it and why we brought it back, just to...
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. As part of the work that's going on to the professional engineering services, there is a component that involves the work that's required for the topographical survey of this property. As many of you might imagine, you need flat surfaces for athletic fields. And when you begin walking those 87 acres, you realize just how uneven it is. And so Parks Director Maria Campada wanted to make sure that the numbers being proposed were something that was accurate so that we wouldn't have to be coming back to the council looking for additional funds in the future. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Anything else? Okay, Court, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Items F, G, H, and I are companion pieces of sorts, highlighting the continued good work of City Engineer and Public Works Director Mike Poubens. Item F is a construction engineering services agreement with Engineering Enterprises, Inc. for the Far West Resurfacing Project. This agreement will authorize the city to hire EEI to oversee the construction of the Far West Resurfacing Project. That project area includes Atwell Street, Rumsford Boulevard, Springside Drive, Moonlight Drive, Springside Drive, College Green Drive, Muirfield Circle, and College Green Drive.
Move for approval?
Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Abstain.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero with one abstention.
Item G is a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for the 2022 Far West Resurfacing Project. This resolution is required as a condition for the city's use of MFT, Motor Fuel Tax Funds, to fund the resurfacing in the Far West area plan. With this resolution, staff is presenting the project limits and scope of the work for the 2022 plan. The estimated cost is just over $2 million.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item H is a construction engineering services agreement with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick for the 2022 East Side Resurfacing Project. This will enable Mr. Poubens to oversee Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick's work for the East Side project. That includes Toastmaster Drive, Harrison Street, Edgebrook Terrace, Cleveland Avenue, Hastings Street, J Street, May Street, and Kramer Avenue.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Powell?
Just a quick comment. I think most of us up here that have served for a while know that one of the most common complaints we get from residents is about, you know, the condition of streets. When are you paving my street? I've got potholes. Things are falling apart. So when these projects come up and we're spending $2 million, $3 million to get things done, and we don't really say a whole lot, but it's important. So I just want to say kudos to our staff for keeping this work, this very important work going, because these are the things, when you pave the street in front of somebody's house, that means something. Those are things that they can look at directly every day and say, this is what my tax dollars are paying for. And it really does make a huge improvement in the neighborhood. So thanks to staff and thanks to all the folks here on the dais for continuing to budget for this important work to be done. Thank you.
Anything else? Court, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item I is the resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for the 2022 East Side Resurfacing Project, no differently than the resolution that we discussed for the West Side project. This will enable the staff to identify to the Illinois Department of Transportation the project limits and scope of work for this project. In this instance, the estimated cost for the work is $2.4 million.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any further discussion? Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. Just a quick question to City Manager Colzo. Just for clarification, when we are doing these work on the streets for both the East Side and the West Side, if we are disturbing the lead service pipes, this would fall under us being able to start replacing those pipes?
That is correct, but these are resurfacing projects, so there is no infrastructure waters were contemplated. But if it was, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, all right, that's all. Thank you.
Anything else? Court, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. At this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn to the regular council meeting.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Court, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene at 7:05.
I walked all the way in back to get a water. Okay, we'll call a regular meeting for the Elgin City Council for June 22, 2022 to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the court please call a roll?
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rocheberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of June 8.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Clerk please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Abstain.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved eight zero with one abstention. Brings us to communications. We have none this evening from... We have none that we have... We have no proclamations this evening. We have one public comment. Gary Swick has asked us to speak.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. Today, I'm representing Friends of the Fox River, and this actually is the home of Friends of the Fox River. I think the concept was born right in this room for a need to be a voice of the river. So, and speaking of home, my brother just moved from St. Charles to Elgin because I convinced him how cool Elgin was. So, I stole one. But I'm here to express a thank you. So, we've had longstanding river cleanup in May with Representative Moller, and we generally go from the Gail Borden Library up to the tollway. And normally, I'm not in charge of arranging a lot of stuff. You know, I just... I... Sorry, right. This year, turns out, some things were not arranged. There was that kind of thing going on. And we decided also to work on a little section of the west side of the river. So, we had challenges. How are we going to get the stuff from the west side to the dumpster on the east side? And I was calling up people to get canoes. And in my panic, Rick came through and connected me with the right people. He had no idea who the heck I was, but he really came through. And Greg Holkey took care of getting the trash on Monday morning and getting it over to the dumpster. I don't know what Molly's position is. It seems to me it's just like get-it-done person. So, she was my first, second, third, and fourth call, probably. And Councilman Stefan was there and helped with the effort on the other side. And Officer Scott Williams helped us out. And that was just perfect, how that whole thing rolled out. So, thank you very much. Like, you can't do these kind of things without partnerships. And Elgin really came through. So, I'm hoping we can continue. We do have partnerships on doing many things, but working on being proactive about keeping trash out of the river as we move forward. And coming up in September will be it's our Fox River Day, and Elgin has signed a proclamation in the past. So, we're hoping that that's going to take place again. I was hoping Elgin would be first, but Batavia just got in there yesterday. But second's fine. And so, that's it. So, thank you very much. I'm really proud to live in Elgin and be a partner with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Brings us to bids. The first item is number 22-023, Central Area Resurfacing Project.
Mayor, make the motion to award the bid to Lamp Concrete Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $817,381.20.
Second. It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez? Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Item two is bid number 22-033, Fountain Square and Spring Street Parking Structure Repairs.
Yes, Mayor Captain, I make the motion to award a contract to Jay Gill and Company in the amount of $127,309.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Item three is bid number 22-039, Airlight Fire Alarm Replacement.
Yes, Mayor Captain, I make the motion to award a contract to I-Wire Technologies LLC in the amount of $67,430.
Second.
Been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Item four is a job order contract, concrete replacement at various locations.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we give the contract to PH Passion in the amount of $315,055 for concrete work.
Second. Been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Brings us to other business. The first item is consideration of petition 11-22 at 239 Dundee Avenue, conditional use to establish an employment agency within an existing multi-tenant commercial building. Mr. Malat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is located at the southeast corner of Dundee Avenue and Kimball Street. Here is Dundee. This is Kimball. PPG Paints is here. Elgin Academy here. This is the Elgin History Museum. The Simons-Madison Funeral Home is here. Ziegler's Ace here, and this is BMO Harris Bank. ProStar Staffing proposes to open a new branch location for a temporary staffing agency at 239 Dundee. The 1,200-square-foot commercial space within the multi-tenant commercial building is currently vacant. Other tenants in the building include Australia Dental, America's Best Contacts and Eyeglasses, Great Homes Real Estate Incorporated, Domino's Pizza. ProStar Staffing is part of Proman Group, one of the largest privately owned and operated staffing services agencies in the world. ProStar's Elgin office would recruit light industrial workers for customers in the greater Chicago area. ProStar does not run day labor operations. The company also does not offer transportation to employees, and employees do not wait in the office to be sent out to work for the day. The applicant is not proposing any interior or exterior change of the building. Any future signage will conform to the zoning ordinance. The applicant is present. Should you have any questions, staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval subject to conditions outlined within your packet.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Malat? Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, just a question out of curiosity. You pointed out that there's no day laborers. There are no people waiting around to be sent off. There's no transportation. Can you tell us why that is pointed out? What's the importance of that?
Well, that's a... That type of image is not necessarily one that would be in the city's best interest. People milling around, collecting, and waiting for work. So, that is one of the main reasons why that type of... This type of use is a conditional use, to look at the specific operations of the staffing agency to ensure that that isn't what is being proposed.
So, have we had issues with those type of establishments in the past?
Not in the 12 years since I've been here.
Okay. I'm trying to connect the dots, but I think she had something to say.
Sure.
Okay.
Please come up to the podium.
Monique Vasquez, and I'm an area director for ProMan Staffing. And the reason we threw that in there, that we're not day labor service, under Illinois, all staffing agencies, we operate under the Day Labor Act. So, many times when we go to rent buildings, they think we're going to have this long line of temporary employees waiting to be dispatched. Our sourcing is very different. The customers we work with are very different. We turn away business that is looking for a one-day temp or someone just to fill a position to keep a line running. We really want sustainable jobs for every person that we work with. We don't commit to filling any orders next day because we want to get... A good candidate's going to need a day to arrange transportation, babysitting things at home. So, we pride ourselves in making those successful matches. And the reason we're here in the city of Elgin trying to open this office, 20% of our employees from our Schiller Park office all live in Elgin. And as a family-owned company, accommodating those people that work hard for us every day is very important. And we wanted to be here in the community to facilitate for them.
And if I may, do you also offer a standard pay rate? So, you don't work with employers who pay maybe less than $15 an hour or $20 an hour or anything like that?
We... It's not like in our contract, but we do turn away business that's not fillable. Many, many hours of my week are spent doing wage analysis surveys. As we know, it's a hard labor market, right? We're not just competing with staffing agencies in the light industrial field. We compete with everyone that's hiring. So, we want bona fide work for our employees. Therefore, if a job is not fillable, we do turn it away. We want to work with companies that either provide really good benefits to employees or that have a retention bonus to make it sustainable for that employee to work there.
Very good.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Powell?
Yes, hi. Thank you for being here. I know this is not a conditional use or zoning-type question, but the issue has been raised by folks in our community, and there have been lawsuits and a couple of studies that have been done in Illinois that have found a lot of racial discrimination taking place specifically against black applicants at these temp agencies in the Chicagoland area. Do you... Does your company have a policy that addresses that? And how can you make sure, as you're operating here in Elgin, that you're not doing that?
So, we're an equal opportunity employer, and I actually brought one of my employees here with me today. I've been with this company for three years. I've been in staffing for 11 years. And inclusion is part of our core values and something that we celebrate and encourage. And I wear this with a badge of honor. The first customer I stepped into while working for ProMan, I walked in, this was a customer outside of Elgin. Every single person looked like me when I walked in, and I met with their new HR manager. We had never serviced this customer, and they said, "We have a problem. We need to diversify our workforce." So, he took a chance on me, and we work with a nonprofit group on the south side of Chicago. Why? Because they're recovering addicts. With someone having two recovering alcoholic parents, it's very important to reach out to that nonprofit community and get these people to work. I can proudly say, three years later, their workforce is so diverse. So, we bring that to customers because we can control that. We take all walks of life, and we match them with good jobs. So, we celebrate inclusion. We don't discriminate anyone. It's nasty stigmatism in the staffing community, but that's not what we're about. I mean, if you look at our workforce, we're in 14 states. We are a very blended company corporate-wise, and we work with all communities on the temp labor side as well.
So, in your... Some of your other areas, because I know you have staffing agencies in other towns, what would you say the demographics of your applicants and temp labor force that you work with, what would you say that breakdown looks like?
It depends on the area, depending on the community that we're working with. We know there's some offices that are in predominantly Hispanic communities. But we... I mean, I could get you those numbers. We do take a... Give an EEOC survey to every applicant, and I could pull active numbers of those that have applied and those that are placed at work. Like, for example, our Naperville office is probably 50% black to 30% Latino because they're the office that facilitates everything for our nonprofit organizations. Our offices in Chicago Ridge and Oak Park will have different numbers based on the communities they're in and the community centers they work with. So, it does vary. We have 12 offices in the Chicagoland area.
Well, I'll be watching.
Yes, and we're happy to partner. I'd love to bring you out to our nonprofit partner so you can see the work we do there.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, one quick question. Do you hire... Well, do you work with companies who hire persons with backgrounds? Is that something that you're hearing about? Out of curiosity, can you...
So, I... We work with many, many different customers based on the customers, their business, and what they do. Not all of them have that flexibility. Some of them have government contracts, and we have to stick to their strict regulations. But we do work with many customers that we've been able to partner with and have them hire for skill, not for background, and many of those employees are now company employees. They're not just forever temps that cannot be given an opportunity because the customer has vetted them through three months of work and has taken a chance to bring them on permanently to their payroll. So, we do... And out of our Elgin office, we will have two customers. We're already onboarded two customers that don't have any background requirements. They focus on the skill and the reliability of the associate.
Very good. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I'd just say kudos. You very, very well represented your organization tonight for a simple zoning matter. You did very well on all the extras.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Item two is consideration of petition 12-22, 2205 Point Boulevard, Amendment to the Existing Area of Special Character for Street Graphics to Allow for a Larger Than Permitted Monument Sign Along I-90 Tollway. Mr. Malat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is located at the northeast corner of I-90 and Randall Road along Tollgate Road. Here is I-90. This is Randall Road, and this is Tollgate. McGrath Honda is up here. Jimmy's Char House here, and this is the headquarters for Fabricators and Manufacturers Association International. This is the new Wood Springs Suites Hotel, and this is the Pace Park and Ride facility. The building owner requests approval of their own electronic changeable monument sign along the tollway. The sign would be 10 feet high and 153 square feet with a 75-square-foot electronic changeable panel. The sign is larger than otherwise permitted by the zoning ordinance, but it is smaller than several others that have recently been approved in the same area along the tollway, including signs from New Haven Display, Capital Corporate Center, and Reiki Office Interiors. The larger size provides visibility of the sign to high-speed drivers over an existing chain-link fence located on tollway property. The city approved a larger electronic changeable panel along I-90 for the entire Randall Point Executive Center Office Park in 2010. The original office park owner subsequently sold 2205 Point Boulevard, and the new owner would like to have their own electronic changeable monument sign. The sign would be available to all building tenants. The property has no other monument sign. The applicant is available. Should you have any questions, staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval, subject to the conditions outlined within your packet.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval, subject to the conditions. Any questions for Mr. Malat or the applicant? Ms. Powell?
Just hoping the graphic that you showed earlier with the big bush in front of the sign is not what... I mean, I hope that that's not going to be there, blocking their sight.
Well, that's one of the reasons to get it up over that. That's the tollway's fence. And so, their ability to go in and clear vegetation has a whole extraordinary set of hurdles in working with IDOT, so...
Sounds like a match.
Not as... Not as easy as it sounds, but yes, it's...
Anything else? Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Brings us to item three, is a public hearing of petition 15-18, 4400 Damish Road, an amendment to the annexation agreement, preliminary plat of subdivision, and a map amendment to plan development to allow modifications to the approved land plan for Pingree Creek subdivision and the final plat approval for the residences at Pingree Creek Multifamily Development. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Malat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is located in northwest Elgin along US Route 20. Here is Route 20. This is the Highland Woods subdivision in Elgin. This is downtown Pingree Grove, and this is the outpost bar also in Pingree Grove. The developer, Geneva-based Shodin, requests approval of an amendment to the land plan for the Pingree Creek subdivision. The 780-acre development was annexed when the land plan you see here in 2004 and 2005. The previously approved plan with an amendment in 2009 allows for the construction of about 2,700 dwelling units across several single and multifamily neighborhoods, a clubhouse, commercial development along Route 20, and a metro station. The previously approved plan also provided 10 acres of land for a public school and more than 275 acres of open space, which is more than 35% of the development. Above-ground construction has not commenced, but Shodin, along with Crown Community Development of Highland Woods, paid almost $9 million toward and installed water and sewer lines that run out to the intersection of Damish Road and Highland Avenue. Metro has subsequently advised the city that it no longer has plans to extend commuter rail west along this line, and as such, has no need for the train station. And in 2016, the city, village of Pingree Grove, and the Illinois Department of Transportation agreed that the best solution to replace the curve at Route 20 and Ranking Road was with a roundabout. The applicant requests approval of the following changes to the land plan in response to the new roundabout, to the 20 acres that were previously dedicated to a metro station and the associated parking, and to changing market conditions. First would be to increase the number of dwelling units from about 2,700 to about 3,000, the vast majority of which would be provided where the metro station and associated parking were once planned; to increase the amount of commercial zoning from along Route 20 from 22 acres to more than 25 acres; to allow certain single-family lots along streets internal to the development to be built with either rear or front-loaded garages, taking access from either alleys or driveways respectively; and to provide flexibility at specific transitional locations at new intersections along Route 20 to develop with either commercial or multifamily residential uses. The clubhouse and open space remain generally the same, and the school site has been moved a bit north and increased in size from 10 to 17 acres. The applicant also requests approval of four new single-family home models, a reduction to the parking requirement for multifamily residential uses necessary because our zoning ordinance does not make a distinction between parking for single-family or multifamily residential uses, and the final plat for the residences at... residential uses, and the final plat for the residences at Pingree Creek. The residences at Pingree Creek is 12 apartment buildings with 224 units on about 12 acres between Ranking and Damish Roads. It is part of Phase One, along with about 120 single-family homes. If approved by city council, earthwork for Phase One is expected to start later this year. The applicant is present should you have any questions. Staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval. Subject to the conditions outlined within your packet.
Any questions for Mr. Malat this time? Ms. Rocheberger?
Thanks. I know it's a public hearing, but we can ask questions.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, I'm sort of disappointed that the train station is not in planning. I think that, you know, as we develop our community and develop communities in northern Illinois, we should have connectivity, and would, of course, increase the value, I think, of all those homes. Do you know why, and are the, is there, I think I looked on Metro, and it seems like Elburne is still a possibility in the future, or is that, the train's still going to go through that area?
It is still planned to go out through that area. They just said that this was not, this was not something that they contemplated and saw a need for in their forecasts, regrettably. But, I agree with you. The opportunity to have multi-modes of transportation is certainly, is certainly highly valuable, and we were disappointed as well.
You don't think they might change that plan anytime in the future to make, and to somehow leave?
I mean, certainly, anything could change. At one point, they had contemplated that it would be there.
Right.
And, and if they came back, and this particular part of the development hadn't, hadn't gone forward at that, at that moment, I'm sure that the developer would.
Reconsider.
Would re-engage in conversations and looking at an amendment to the land plan to bring it back.
Yeah, that is, I think, disappointing. So, I know, I don't, I wasn't on council when this was all, this land was brought into Elgin, but it basically, basically surrounds Pingree Grove. Is that not correct?
Yes.
And?
Or you could, or you could, or you could argue it infills between where Elgin, the current western edge of Elgin, and the eastern edge of Pingree Grove. You know, Pingree Grove, we've all heard Elgin's great success stories in terms of our growth from 2010 to 2020, you know, eighth to sixth, largest gain of any city, more than 100,000 people. But, Pingree Grove is growing at, by the same leaps and bounds. They added over 5,800 people at the, in the same time, and they were lauded as the fastest-growing community of more than 2,000 people in that same time period. So, it's really not necessarily some sort of push out by Elgin, but a correct infill in between two very vastly growing and desirable communities.
Right, okay. And Shodine was particularly interested due to access to water, to our water?
Shodine is here.
Yes.
You could certainly ask them to.
Yeah, please.
To describe why they chose to join Elgin low those, almost 20 years ago.
Versus, versus Pingree Grove.
Good evening. For the record, David Patzelt, P-A-T-Z-E-L-T, President of Shodine Construction, 77 North First Street, Geneva, Illinois 60134. If I can back up on a couple of your comments, it's interesting that you bring up Metro and Mark's desire that if we could have Metro. We are the property owner, what I refer to as the donut, if you refer to the donut hole as being the Elburne Metro Train Station. So, we are in the midst of developing that property and have been for several years. That development, interestingly enough, is of similar size of about 2,700 units with both the commercial property as well as residential, and then the residential of single-family and multifamily, similar to this, this development. So, it was our desire at one point, and still is, to have Metro, a metro station there. But, I worked on the annexation of this property, and we at once hoped, but have to realize after 18 years or so that it's probably not going to happen. But, this is a partnership. I don't want to sound too cliché-ish, but it is a partnership between us and the community, and it is a long-term project. We've already been at it 18 years, and we've put a sewer and water in the ground and haven't done much more than, much more than that, but would like to do quite a bit more. So, if by some chance, Metro Station were to come back, or perhaps a hovercraft landing pad, we will be back before you to try to get some zoning to change that.
Right.
Yes.
Another interesting point about this property, we actually had to do a de-annexation of portion of this property from the village of Pingree Grove in order to annex the property to the city of Elgin. That de-annexation was a voluntary and non-confrontational de-annexation by the village of Pingree Grove some 18, 20 years ago. So, at that point in time, it was our, our desire to work with the city, the city of Elgin in comparison to the village of Pingree Grove. And I think one of the main driving forces at that time, the village of Pingree Grove, was working with D.R. Horton, and their desire and growth was kind of towards the, what I'll say, the north and the northwest. And so, I, I don't, I see this more as the western edge of Elgin than being an infill or filling in of Pingree, Pingree Grove. So, we are much happier to be in the city of Elgin with, with this property and, and this project. So, hopefully, I didn't get too long-winded there, but give you a few background answers to some of your questions or comments.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, it's probably a lot has changed in 20 years in development in all areas. So, but yeah, thank you, thank you for that. I know there's been development out there. I have a friend that lives out in Pingree Grove. So, one of my questions was, is there, I couldn't quite tell, because I'm not an expert at reading the diagrams, but there was some connectivity, you know, by roads from the proposed, your plats with the developments that are already there? There's just a few already there? Do you know what I mean? That roads might connect, or?
That, I would describe it as if you did not know where the city limit line was, you would.
Would, right.
Vehicular or pedestrian connections to the village of Pingree Grove and back and forth to the city of Elgin, you, you will not know that you're exiting or entering one municipality or the other.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, and I, you know, I did appreciate that it looks like the development is using more of a grid, grid system, and I appreciate the home designs, which are, you know, neighborly and without garage fronts and things like that. So, it looks like a wonderful development.
Thank you.
I guess one other question was, as we think, you probably, no one considered this 20 years ago, but, and I know we've talked about this in the Sustainability Commission, are you considering building some of the homes, like with infrastructure for electric vehicles?
We currently do that.
Okay.
Sometimes we are restricted. We recently had a home buyer that requested three chargers for three electric vehicles. Unfortunately, the size of the chargers they wanted in that case exceeded the electric service to the, to the home. So, it creates a little bit of a, of a problem, but we currently offer that in our homes and other, other communities, and will certainly be continuing that here in Elgin.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anything else from Mr. Pass? Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to comment. I've seen a few presentations from you, and it looks like we've become flexible with parking requirements. So, I just want to applaud that. I think that's a good move, not only residential but commercial. And then, a question I have, kind of just in general, so, the infrastructure went in the ground 18 years ago. I'm not an expert in this, but I believe that infrastructure needs to be updated, you know, every 20 or so years. So, are we on the hook for doing the infrastructure in the near future? I guess my question is, does it come down to usage, or is it a mixture of usage and just the climate that it's existing in?
So, I can tell you that our Public Works and our, and our Water Department are very aware of this infrastructure and, and having to ensure that it is maintained, knowing that development is coming. So, but in terms of, you know, what are they doing on a, an annual basis to do that? Is there a flushing regimen that they go through? I don't know that specific. I'd be happy to look into it and get back to you, but we are, we are ready, and we certainly don't want to waste Shodine or Crown's development, because it was a public-private partnership for the installation of that infrastructure.
Absolutely, yeah. It just from the, you know, the weirdness of the recession was a lot of these developments were being built. Plug was pulled, and, you know, we, I guess, didn't really cash in on that first infrastructure install, so.
That's a great question. I'm sorry I don't have the more, the specificity of, of maintenance of those lines.
Anything else? Mr. Shaw?
Just a question, I guess, on timeline. We approved this today. Kind of, when do we start to see a ramp up of homes and properties that you might be able to estimate out, just kind of from what you're projecting at this point in time?
So, one of these slides that, those two yellow circles there are actually the first phase, and we are hoping that we can get ground moved yet this fall, if not early next spring.
Again, how many homes was that?
That was approximately 120 single families and approximately 200 rental, rental units, apartments.
Gotcha, okay. You know, the, the comment I think made before, too, that I guess I would have is, you know, that with the train station maybe not going through this, this area, you know, so much has changed since then, too. I mean, so many more people are working from home, you know, folks that, that maybe, you know, living in these types of homes, you know, maybe will have opportunities where they, where they don't need to drive and commute as much as, as well. So, things have changed quite dramatically from 18 years ago as well, I would imagine. I guess the other question I would have is, I believe they said this was the District 301.
Part of it.
Part of it. It's a three.
You can approximately draw the line where, where, where Ranking Road hits at where the roundabout will be. So, south of there is 301.
Okay.
And everything north of there is 300.
Okay. Has there, has there been any feedback from the school districts in regards to this development at all, or no?
We are keeping them apprised of the progress of this and all developments. We, we send them annual reports. We send them annual checks for their impact fees. So, they are, they are made aware monthly of how many building permits are being issued. They also, 301 also sits on the Transportation and Development Subcommittee sponsored by the Chamber, of which I chair, and they are a participant. So, we're regularly talking about developments that are in the pipeline so that we continue to make sure that we're in lockstep.
Gotcha. Nope. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Ms. Rocheberger?
Yeah, just quickly, does Shodine own the apartments and rent the apartments through your organization?
We do, and then some more, and I'll take another couple of minutes about the Shodine organization. So, we're not your traditional developer and just old home builder. We're also in the commercial development, construction, and ownership business. So, whether it be single-family homes, apartment, apartment homes, or commercial buildings, we currently have in our portfolio of about a million square feet within the Kane County area of office and retail space, and that can be, consists of tenants as small as approximately a 400-square-foot dental office, one-chair dental office, to the Jewel OSCO at Randall and Route 38 is a tenant, is a tenant of ours. So, and they're about 55,000 square feet. So, if, there's a wide spectrum of commercial tenants. At one point in time, we had about 800 to 1,000 apartments within our portfolio that we began constructing in 1970s that were generally in the Geneva-St. Charles-Bitavia area. Many years ago, we sold off a large portion of that portfolio and have started rebuilding back that apartment portfolio with new product. Some of our product, some city councils get a little bit nervous about it. It's a three-story, we have a three-story product with underground parking. We have built up to a four-story building with two levels of parking underneath. It's something that I have toyed with, with your staff about in doing something in your, in the, in the downtown, downtown area here and redevelopment. So, look at us as just not a single-family home builder that's coming in to build some homes and getting out. We try to bring in a variety of single-family home product, as well as rental home product, as well as commercial product. And again, using the term partnering, we plan to be here a long, a long time, not just building homes, whether for sale, rental, but also commercial, and then other redevelopment opportunities.
Thank you. I appreciate that wide variety of products you provide.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Just a point of clarification. I was going to ask Mr. Patzelt about the, his comment at the Planning Commission meeting and talking about the fact that these projects go out so long. This was 18 years before I was on the council, but I remember when we talked about the, and we connect connectivity, and to Mr. Good's question, the sanitary district in the city of Elgin plan for these kind of developments, they're based on the size. Our job is to put the big pipe in, to get it out there, and their job is to get it in and put the sewer and the water in, in the development. But, the pipe that we run out there will be sized to be able to handle this, this, this type of development. As long as they don't go to 9,000 homes out there, that will be, create a little bit of a problem. And to Ms. Rocheberger's point, I served and went to a couple of meetings on High Speed Rail, goes back to Pingree Grove. And at that time, the Metro and the state of Illinois were looking at a rail system that would connect Rockford. I went to the groundbreaking and the ribbon-cutting for a train station in Rockford that would have connected into Big Timber Station. There was also another plan to go through the village of Huntley, and the village of Huntley bought and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on plans for a railroad station that is not built, because Metro backed out of those things, and the high-speed rail never happened. And that's just the way that long-term things change. We can't make Metro do this, and I will not speak for Metro. But, at this, at this point, that's where those things were, went to two different areas, two different train stations that were never, never built. So, glad to see the project, and I think it's, been a long time. I remember having this discussion on planning a long time ago. Okay, anything else? Mr. Malat?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Those are, those are great points. If I just add two quick things. Councilmember Rocheberger, you had asked about the electric charging stations and the modifications to current homes. Building on what Mr. Patzelt mentioned to you, we internally are looking at that as a potential amendment to our building code to make the, to make sure that homes are ready for easy outfit, and that that would be made universal across the city of Elgin. And as the mayor pointed out, in terms of the long-range planning, the perspectives, not only are the sanitary districts and, and all of our public transportation agencies, as well as the city, but we make sure our 2018 comprehensive plan is also in lockstep with the broader regional plan put forth by Kane County and their 2040 plan. And while it may seem like we're continuing to go out, this corridor all the way west to Route 47 has been, is identified as their critical growth area. So, all different perspectives that are all coming together to bring this development to you today.
Anything else? Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. This question, I think, is more for staff. I know that the developers, developers, are they in charge of putting names on the streets, or how does that work?
Those are, those are suggested during the preliminary and then approved by the, by the city in the final plat process. I can't recall any circumstances where we have suggested names in advance of that. However, we make sure that there aren't any conflicts with current naming conventions, that we don't have something that they want to call a boulevard that we already call a street, so that our emergency providers don't run the risk of potential confusion if there happens to be a call.
I ask this question because we do have a fireman here, and I'm sure he can, sorry. And I'm sure he agrees that, you know, like if you have Maple Lane, Maple Street, that's very confusing. And right now, I'm seeing on page 354 Prairie Street. We have a Prairie Street on the east side.
That, that will get, that will get corrected.
Grove Street. I know we have Grove Avenue, but that creates a big problem. We have Rhodes from Row, too, one with one S, one with two S's. When you say it, how do you know which, you know? I know at the post office, you could tell the address by how many digits, you know, would tell us east-west, but it's always been a big concern, and it's been a big headache, not only at the post office, but I'm sure with the fire department, police department. So, I, I was just curious how that happens. So I, I was just curious how that happens.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, and that we will make sure that that doesn't get happen, that that doesn't happen and that gets corrected before signs go up on the street names, absolutely. Part of our internal process, when we get these development applications, is to submit them to all the city agencies. Engineering gets them, Public Works, Water, Police, Fire. Everyone gets a chance to make, to look at these and identify any potential concerns that may be specific to, to their areas of expertise, so.
Yeah, I was hoping you'd say that we had one central place.
Well, we do. That is, that is community development.
Yeah.
It all comes back, it all comes back to DeMeere.
Oh.
And collects all those comments, sends it all out.
He's not here.
He is like, he is like the hub, and we radiate it out like the spokes. It all comes back, so all of our applicants have one point of contact.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the council? This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address or speak to this petition, now is the time to step up. Anyone wish to comment on this petition? Seeing no one coming forward or no at the podium, I declare the public hearing closed. Takes us to item four, is consideration of petition 15-18, 4400 Demish Road, Amendment to an Annexation Agreement, Preliminary Plaid of Subdivision, and MAP Amendment to Plan Development to Allow Modifications to the Approved Land Plan for Pingree Grove Subdivision, and Final Plaid Approval for the Residences at Pingree Creek Multi-Family Development. Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved to second for approval, subject to conditions. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine-zero. Congratulations, Dave, and good work getting this done so fast. Brings us to item five, is a resolution accepting the proposal of Alliant Property Insurance Program for the City of Elgin's Property, Inland Marine, and Cyber Liability Insurance. Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine-zero. Item six is a resolution authorizing execution of a purchase of, agreement, a purchase agreement with Duff Entertainment Incorporated for operational services for the 2022 Nightmare on Chicago Street event. Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved to second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting no again tonight for this item. As a councilperson representing the entire City of Elgin, I can't disagree with our staff recommending to postpone until 2023. The weather concerns, the fact that we're still in the pandemic, and the projected enormous costs, the city and taxpayers, what it's going to cost, cost us. Please know that I want Nightmare on Chicago Street to be very successful, but in this case, I feel the risks outweigh the benefits for Elgin. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Powell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Captain. I'm full, fully aware that I know we have council members that don't support Nightmare on Chicago Street. I just want to point out, we recently had Juneteenth celebration downtown Elgin this past weekend, went very well, had well over 1,000, probably 2,000 folks down in Festival Park, estimated. All the communities around us are returning to their special events, risk or no risk. We don't need to be left out of that because our people will go somewhere else. If anything, I, I would like to see us do more during the summer. We have Festival Park, but don't have a whole lot of festivals down there. I say that every year. But, you know, we can, we can sit here and continue to be risk averse to everything that is brought forward, or we could have some vision and try to do some things different and think outside of the box and be creative to do something that's going to be good for this community. That's my opinion. Definitely support Nightmare on Chicago Street. Every year, it's a risk. Every year, it's a risk with the weather, and we move forward with it anyway. So I will be voting for this and just hope that the majority of the council continues to have the courage and the forethought and vision to do something for this community that helps to not only bring visitors to our community, as we heard from Chrissy Lee and, and Ryan earlier today, but something for our own folks to come in and celebrate and do in our community. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Martinez?
Just out of curiosity, how much did Juneteenth, Juneteenth cost the city? Does anybody know? Can anybody, I know it's brand new.
Juneteenth was not a city-sponsored event, but it was a Elgin Cultural Arts Commission co-sponsored event. So there was probably less than about $10,000 allocated from the city to help with that event. That event is put on by a private entity.
Okay.
But I'm hoping that the city abstaining a little bit more next year, just making that public, because of the success that we had this year.
And what was the attendance on that, do you know?
Probably around 2,000 people.
2,000 people, okay. No, I'm just comparing things that the city is sponsoring and what it costs the residents of Elgin. That's why I brought that up. Thank you.
Anything else? Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved seven-two. Item seven is a resolution authorizing execution of a change order, number one, with light construction incorporated for the Bose Creek Clubhouse Patio Project. Move approval.
Second.
Moved to second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Abstaining.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine-zero. Miscellaneous business? Move approval.
Second.
Moved to second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved nine-zero. Announcements, the next committee of the whole meeting will be Wednesday, July 13th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers. The next regular meeting of the Elgin City Council will be Wednesday, July 13th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers. I entertain a motion to adjourn back to the committee of the whole.
Salute.
Second.
It's been moved to second and to adjourn back to the committee of the whole. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene at 8:05. We'll give Ms. Pacala a few minutes to get herself set up.[1131.42]
Start finding our seats, please.
They're back their bed. Everyone to get it together.
Okay, Ms. Pacala, floor is yours.
Actually, I'll start this one off.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, the city staff. Who's here? Um, my name is Steve Kreis, and I'm the President of the Board for the Downtown Neighborhood Association, a downtown business owner and Elgin resident. Uh, accompanying me tonight are some of my fellow board members. Uh, actually, fellow board member, the other one stepped out. Do you mind waving? Thank you. While I'm here, I'd like to share my story with regards to my experience here in Elgin. Previous to moving here nine years ago, I've never been to Elgin, so I had a rather untainted outside view of the city when coming here. Since moving here, I've now owned four different homes, all of which were within walking distance of the downtown, with one of them being in the downtown.
I've got to stop you for one second.
Please.
We have a business, a little order of business to take care of. We didn't reek of me in the meeting.
So moved.
Well, you can pick up where you're at.
Yeah. All right, so Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes, yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes. Now, back to the presentation.
Thank you. Uh, since moving here, I've now owned four different homes, all of which were within walking distance of the downtown, with one of them being in the downtown itself. Uh, and started multiple businesses based here in Elgin. Uh, when I came here in 2013, uh, walking through the downtown, it looked like a shell of a once thriving city. Uh, as I learned the history of Elgin, I understood why so many long-term Elginites that either once lived or still live here, or still live here, are disappointed in their downtown. The first four years of me living here, the downtown had remained fairly the same with small shops or businesses coming and going and business owners, uh, that have had buildings sitting vacant for a number of years. Now, a bit of a sidetrack here. When I started my first business, uh, I was asked by someone much smarter than me, uh, is there anything that they could do for me? My naive response was, give me a bunch of clients. Uh, they responded with, okay, could you handle me giving you 100 clients tomorrow? After thinking about it, I responded, no, I can only take on a few clients each month. Uh, because both my business and I wasn't prepared to handle that kind of influx in workload overnight, and more importantly, the quality of work that my clients would experience would be very poor. Now, coming back to the downtown, we want to focus on quality over quantity. Over the last five years, as much as we all want it to become a thriving metropolis overnight, there has to be a lot of work that's put in to creating a foundation to ensure the positive changes that we have seen locally, including things like a number of stagnant properties turned over in ownership, new businesses, most of these even surviving through COVID, new business concepts, new residential properties, buildings that have once been vacant now becoming something new. In addition, with these changes, we've been starting to see a transition in public sentiment as well. I've had many conversations with individuals outside of our community, also starting to take notice, whether that can be coming downtown, uh, on the weekends for some food, going to weddings or special events at many of our event spaces. Thank you. Uh, coming to church, going to farmers markets, and attending the Hemmings for a concert. The downtown is once again becoming a destination that is desirable for the entire city. And with that, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Pacala.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that in. We need a taller microphone. Thank you for that introduction, uh, Board President Steve Kreis, and I just want to say good evening to the council and mayor and staff, and thank you so much for the opportunity to present today. I just want to further appreciate, um, our great staff members. We have Jennifer Arnt, our Promotions Manager in the audience tonight, as well as our new Events Coordinator and Manager of our Farmers Market, Sarah Michaels. And, um, also, we would not, uh, the work of the DNA would not be, we would not be able to tackle the volume and variety of, uh, projects and initiatives without the help of our talented committees, um, and committee members. So, you know, on the screen here right now is, um, a list of these committees that we've been able to maintain, um, throughout COVID and continue to grow this year. And we do have some representatives from our committees in the audience tonight that stuck around. If you gentlemen can, uh, raise your hands. And I, I, we have somebody from Visitors Bureau as well. Yeah. Thank you, I appreciate it. Just want to make sure everybody gets recognized for their work. So I just want to start by highlighting, uh, a little bit of where we've been in 2021. And, uh, just to start by highlighting some notable achievements that we were able to make despite the pandemic. So, uh, based on, um, with the additional support from the council that was secured in our last PSA agreement, and in recognition of, um, the challenging times of COVID for the businesses, one of the first things that we did in 2021 was to, um, make our business support services, which was previously known as membership, free for all downtown businesses. So if you're located within our service area, um, or you're a client who is interested in locating within our service area, all of, there's absolutely no barriers to gaining these services. And we felt that was really important, especially based on the COVID climate and, um, just kind of the needs over the last couple of years. Uh, we saw a surge in, uh, use of our website, uh, up over 30%. You know, we, we do base that, um, you know, we do see that as a COVID-related impact as well, that a lot more people are getting their information on, uh, websites and social media over the last couple of years versus other modes of, of communication that were previously more popular. We, uh, had a, a huge, uh, increase in gift certificate sales with our, um, holiday campaign. Um, you know, also speaking to, uh, you know, a lot of the, the public sentiment of wanting to support small businesses through the, uh, through the pandemic. We definitely, uh, want to appreciate all of our community members that, that did that, and this is just one reflection of, of that support. And, um, all the many businesses that participate in this program gain, um, you know, are the ones that get to benefit from, from that investment in those gift certificates. Uh, we also had a wonderful economic impact, and this is an estimated economic impact for our farmers market in, uh, 2021 that I know was also very helpful to our businesses. On behalf of the city and, um, and the downtown stakeholders, DNA maintains a variety of relationships with professional organizations and, um, that support our work and with resources and, you know, in a variety of ways. So on the left here, you see, uh, we have memberships with the International Economic Development Council, with Main Street America. Uh, the Farmers Market Association was really pivotal to us being able to continue operating our farmers market over the last two years, um, with their guidance and support. Um, and, and they were working very closely with the state government as well to ensure that we were able to, uh, continue to, to operate markets, uh, farmers markets for the last couple of years. Um, we do, uh, subscribe to a ongoing, um, economic development educational opportunity for our staff, board, and, and volunteers. And this is through the International Economic Development Council, who is regularly providing programming on relevant trends and current work with industry experts in the area of economic development. So having access to that information has also been very important. Um, we did attend a Main Street conference in Jacksonville, Illinois, last fall, um, with a delegation from our board. And there was about 25 other downtown agencies there, as well as, um, support from the Lieutenant's Governor's Office and the Department of Commerce. So that was a really beneficial, um, ability for downtown agencies to convene together and learn from each other, and especially, um, understanding what everybody's going through with COVID, be able to compare notes. So, um, in addition to that, um, you know, we've done some advertising and some networking with the BizNow organization that I know some of the council members, uh, subscribe to their emails and things like that. And that is, um, to tap into the commercial real estate industry. On the right here is, uh, just a sampling of some of the many local partnerships that we have. You know, between myself and our staff, um, we sit on many different boards and committees, um, in the, in the community. I actually forgot to add one on here. We're also on the Kane Elgin Home Commission, um, with some of the council members, as well as Mark Malat. Um, we've been able to form partnerships with Judson University and the Alignment Collaborative for Education to get some great interns. Um, so that's been really helpful. Um, you know, DNA does not complete, uh, the volume of work and, and scope that we're able to do with just three staff people. We really, um, build a team around ourselves. And I'm, just want to give a shout out to our interns from U46. If they're listening right now, uh, they said they'd be watching it on YouTube, and they're just fabulous young men who are really helping us this summer. As well as many nonprofit, um, museums, the library, many different arts agencies that we partner with, um, either, you know, through our farmers market or a variety of different promotional campaigns throughout the year. Right now, we have a couple of campaigns going with the library for their Follow the Yellow Brick Road, um, promotion and others. So now, getting into some of our current work. Um, it is farmers market season. The farmers market did open on June 3rd, and, uh, we were expecting a strong turnout. But I think I can speak for everybody on my team when I say that, uh, the week one attendance really exceeded our expectations. Um, this is a record turnout based on, um, all of the data that we have at DNA. Um, the, the closest previous number for attendance was last year when we hit 1254, but 3,000 people came out on opening day. And, um, the, the atmosphere was, was very vibrant, a lot of positivity, a lot of people that were excited to be out. So just the volume of positive feedback. Um, we did have rain in Week 2, which set us back a little bit. It, it poured for two hours, but we did see strong attendance again in Week 3. So I have every, um, every confidence that this kind of strong attendance is going to continue at least through the summer. Um, and, um, I think that's very encouraging for, you know, other events in the community and things like that to take notice as well. Some of our goals for this season was to expand the number of vendors that we're working with, um, to expand our First Fridays offerings, and to develop, um, new business collaboration opportunities like our Business After Hours program that I'm going to talk about a little bit more. Um, with First Fridays, we do have extended hours in the months of June, July, and August. Um, on that First Friday of the month, where we're bringing in food trucks, we're bringing in additional entertainment, and then we're encouraging people to also take part in the after-hours offerings of many of our downtown businesses, um, that are in the food service or nightlife-related, um, industries. So just want to appreciate their participation as well. And so far this season, we've had 18 downtown businesses that are directly participating with the farmers market. But, um, I would argue that any, any customer service-based business that has hours open on a Friday is indirectly participating with the farmers market every week as well. So getting into some trends of what we've seen, what we have seen over the last three years. Um, and I actually pulled numbers here from 2019 as well. So we can kind of see, uh, see what has happened since, uh, before COVID through COVID and what we're currently seeing this season. On the right here is our participation with vendors, sponsors, and community partners. And you can see that, um, you know, we did take a step back in 2020. Um, there was a lot of activities that really were not appropriate or able to be conducted in 2020 per, um, state guidance, um, for COVID and regulations. And I would also just point out that vendors are small businesses that were feeling the same impacts as all of our small business, all of our brick and mortar small businesses as well. So, um, we did cut out all ready-to-eat foods. Um, there was no sampling or eating food on-site, for example. So, um, you can see that, you know, that was sort of reflected in some of the vendor numbers. We were able to kind of build back to pre-COVID levels last year. And then this year, you can see that we've grown even further, um, particularly in the area of vendors where our goal was to bring in, um, three to four new farmers, and we exceeded that. I believe we have seven growers operating with us this year. So we're really excited to see new people getting into these businesses as well, because we consider the farmers market, all of the vendors at the farmers market, to be potential brick and mortar businesses for the future or to be vendors in some of our existing brick and mortar businesses, um, by partnering with their products and things like that. So looking at seasonal attendance, I, um, I'm just really excited about the trajectory that we're on this year, because for 2022, uh, just in the first three weeks of the season, we've basically already, um, we've already reached about a third of what our total attendance were for last season. So, you know, I, I think if we keep on track, we're really going to see record attendance this year. And I think that's just reflective of, um, just where everybody's at with wanting to get back to, um, events and activities and, um, kind of moving forward with their lives. So we're really excited to give them this opportunity to, to do this in downtown Elgin. Some of our other promotional activities that we have, uh, are plans for the rest of the season. Um, we do have a new guest blog program. Um, we've been doing blogs internally for years, and that's really just writing content-based articles about some of the things that are happening downtown to help people understand, um, what's going on, how to engage. You know, very similar to like a magazine article. Uh, but we've developed this guest blog program to invite others in our community or for our, from our partner agencies, um, to be able to share content and their own perspective on what they love about downtown Elgin on our website. And so we've actually, uh, been talking with Chris Lee and her team at the Explorer Elgin Visitors Bureau about some co-hosting of blogs. And that will, um, really help, uh, build the audience around both of our websites. And some of the other agencies in town are, are talking about this as well. And this is, uh, we're actually going to have a couple of guest blogs coming out here from our student interns from U46, which will be a really exciting perspective to get the perspective of a teenager on what they think is great about downtown Elgin. So, um, you know, an opportunity to, to, you know, speak voice into a, a, a demographic that we don't always hear from when we're talking about downtown promotional work. Uh, we are developing a new resident brochure, and this is actually an initiative that's led by Jennifer Arnt, our Promotions Manager and our Promotions Committee. Um, this is based on a volume of requests that we've gotten over the last couple of years. As we all know, there's a lot of new people moving to Elgin. Um, so requests from our neighborhood groups, as well as, um, residential realtors, to have a new resident brochure that talk, that, uh, familiarizes people with downtown Elgin and kind of the high level of what they need to know. It's just going to be a simple tri-fold piece. And I want to appreciate, um, a couple of sponsors that are helping make this possible. Simmons Madison Funeral Home, as well as the Elgin Symphony Orchestra, are helping to, um, to bring this initiative forward. So I want to appreciate their efforts there. Uh, we'll also be supporting Nightmare on Chicago Street. Obviously, this is an event hosted by the city, but us as the downtown support agency, we want to make that, we want to help make that as smooth as possible and, um, to really have like open, uh, collaboration there and, um, you know, leading up to the event. But one of the things that we do every year with Nightmare, and we're excited to do again, is to promote what the businesses are doing to collaborate with Nightmare. You've heard from, um, Kate O'Leary and the, um, some of the committee members from Nightmare, that they're encouraging businesses to plan pre-events this year. So we'll be promoting all of those pre-events in a cohesive manner through a landing page on our website, as well as all of the hours of operation and activities that the businesses are planning for that evening. So when guests come down here to enjoy Nightmare, they can already know, um, what businesses are, are open and, um, going to be enhancing that event experience for them. So we're really excited about that. We will be also, uh, concluding the year with our holiday campaign. Um, and I just want to appreciate the support from the Elgin City Council during the last budget season. Um, the Holiday Cheers Beverage Crawl that we partnered with, with the City of Elgin, was very successful last year. We had extremely positive feedback, both on the business side as well as the community side. So I just want to thank you for helping make it possible for us to do that again this year, and we're really looking forward to it. As well as some of the other great holiday, um, promotional activities, such as some of the pop-up events that we do. Um, the Holiday Murals will be returning, and lots of different business promotions as well. Getting into some of our economic development work and some of our current, uh, activities in this area, our current priorities in this area. Um, so essentially, uh, this is, this is kind of where our focus is currently. You know, we, we provide a lot of different services based on what the needs are, but this is where we're seeing the greatest volume of need right now, um, for our, for our support. We have had, um, at least eight property transactions that is properties that changed hands in the last 12 months, with at least two more currently in process. I've learned it isn't done until it's done and closed. So, you know, um, we're continuing, uh, some of the ways that we support these transactions is with, um, pre-purchase support. So that's both with the, uh, potential buyers. Sometimes that's with the seller, and sometimes that's with either one of their realtors, um, to help them, um, understand some, um, make sure that they understand some opportunities for marketing the building for appropriate uses. Um, believe it or not, that doesn't always just happen on its own. Um, and just understanding, uh, what some of the, the building needs are for, for different types of uses, um, both, uh, both pre-purchase but also post-purchase. So once somebody purchases that building, um, none of these folks have purchased these buildings without plans to do something with them. So that in and of itself is a win. Um, some of these buildings have not been operable in the time that I've been here or long before. There's one building in particular that I, um, really didn't have high hopes that we, that we were going to be able to sell anytime soon. It, it hasn't had mechanicals on it for a while. Um, but this is one of the properties that's changed hands through, um, some unique partnerships and things like that that are coming together. And so that's a building that hasn't been operable in a while that will be operable again now with, um, with the will and, and investment of a new owner. So continuing to support those needs. Um, and also, you know, once we have these new property owners, uh, a lot of times we are meeting with them to help understand what their goals are for the property, how they bring that forward into an appropriate project, and what different appropriate city departments need to be involved in those conversations. Sometimes we're scheduling walkthroughs, um, with, with, um, different building inspectors or maybe we're on sessions from the fire department to make sure that those, uh, property owners know how to approach their projects so that they're not going to have surprises down the road and on the back end. And so that we're all having, um, having buildings coming out of these projects that are going to carry forward into the future with, um, you know, compatible uses. Um, additionally, we have, uh, we have an additional seven properties that are currently listed for sale. And, oh, we only have seven properties that have available leasable space right now. So we actually have a very low vacancy rate right now. Some of these properties are the same. So some, so this is only 12 total buildings, seven and seven. Um, some of them are available for lease or purchase, and that's why that is. But, um, for example, some of these properties that have leasable space, uh, one of them in particular is only appropriate for industrial use. Uh, there's only one retail storefront. There is only one retail food, uh, restaurant space. So when we're talking to potential business clients and things like that, it is starting to get more competitive downtown for these available spaces. And, and even, um, some of the buildings, like the professional building with their office space, has continued to see strong, um, lease and, and, you know, new clients coming in and things like that. So it's really exciting to be in, to be in downtown Elgin right now and see these kind of trends coming forward. And, you know, the glue really starting to set, um, to, you know, I, I think of this as like priming the pump for the next, uh, leap of growth. So, you know, our downtown rate, vacancy rate, this is for all commercial vacancy, is about 6%. Of course, this only accounts for the buildings that are publicly listed. A few of them are not publicly listed, um, but I do think that's still a, a helpful number. We are having more and more property owners start to work with professional real, uh, real estate professionals, and we certainly support that and their, um, and their, um, their realtors as well. Other economic development initiatives. Uh, the farmers market is an event, but we also look at it as an incubator. And I mentioned all of those new vendors. All of those are potential clients that might be interested in growing. Um, I'll use the example of Maraki Market. They started as a soap vendor in 2020, and, um, they ended up purchasing a building and are having a very successful retail business down on South Grove that we've had a lot of positive feedback about. So, um, this is just, uh, you know, one example, uh, but there are several other vendors who have expressed interest. We are continuing to support that interest, help them understand, um, kind of where they're at and where they may need to grow to, providing resources. Um, in addition to that, we are making connections between vendors and our businesses. For example, some of the vendors offer wholesale product lines that downtown businesses may want to carry in order to expand their product offerings. And so that's just another way for these vendors to help for these vendors to help grow our businesses and participate in downtown Elgin. Also, the farmer's market is giving us the opportunity to help businesses scale up. There's been a lot of changes that businesses have had to make throughout COVID, and one of the opportunities is to help businesses scale up and staff up and align their hours of operation around something like the farmer's market, especially on Fridays, align their staffing with increased customer flow, and we feel that that's only going to help businesses be better prepared for things like Nightmare on Chicago Street that's coming later in the fall, rather than just kind of going into something that big cold turkey. Now more on the functionality and operational side of economic development. We are working on several initiatives with the Parking and Traffic Committee, and I just want to appreciate everybody on that committee for being so great to work with. We saw an opportunity to improve the signage for the farmer's market zone. We do have to have Institute No Parking on Fridays in order to, to operate the market there. And the temporary signs that were being used in the past, you know, sometimes they'd be getting faded throughout the season, or there was just, you know, blowing away in storms, different things like that. And so the Parking Committee, we got together with them and, excuse me, and were able to create some, some signage that is actually printed on, on actual signage material that can just be clipped up and taken down once a season and saved for the next year. And, and, you know, should the market zone ever shift and whatnot, these signs are evergreen in that way, so they can be placed wherever they need to be placed. So that's something that's already been done, and you can see a picture of on the left. Additionally, we are, we do have a couple of projects in process with the Parking Committee. So we are looking for a permanent, we are working towards a permanent solution for the curbside spaces, as well as increased delivery and loading needs in downtown Elgin. COVID's changed a lot of trends, and one of those things is a lot more deliveries coming in. So all of our residents downtown, as well as our businesses, they're all getting Amazon deliveries just like the rest of us, and those Amazon trucks have to park somewhere. It gets a little hairy down on South Grove occasionally with a lot of folks coming and going, but, you know, there's also delivery drivers, there's also, you know, customers coming and going and things like that. And so we're working towards a solution for a rebranded, short-term pickup and drop-off opportunity to fulfill those needs, as well as accessory vehicle parking. So this is where businesses have expanded to either need a seasonal vehicle, or something that is an expanded programming opportunity for them. The best example I have is the Side Street Art Bus, as well as a couple of buses that the Y has for some of their summer camp activities. And, and we're looking, we're working with the Parking Committee right now on appropriate parking and storage location and opportunity for that. So looking at the, so during COVID, a lot of, you know, there's been a lot of talk in the media about the impact on small businesses, the impact on downtowns, and just, there's been a lot of trends towards downtowns losing businesses or shopping districts, shopping districts in general losing businesses. You know, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but if anybody's been down to Algonquin Commons lately, I'm sure you've noticed that, that they've lost some businesses, just as an example. So you might be asking, what have our business trends looked like over the last three years in downtown Elgin? And I've got a graph for you. So what you're looking at here is an initiative that we started in 2020, actually before COVID. So, so this is an initiative that we have the support of our Economic Development Committee on, and we started taking a point-in-time count or inventory of the downtown businesses every year in January to start the year, and comparing year to year what's happening. And so in 2020, before COVID, we had 302 businesses in downtown Elgin within our service area. Going forward into 2021, obviously the impacts of COVID, we did see, when you're looking at the green line there where it says individual businesses, that is what you think of as one business operating in one location. So that would be something like Arabica, or, you know, many of the different offices and things like that in downtown Elgin. It's one-for-one. But there's also business concepts that have come into our downtown, you know, talking a little, piggybacking a little bit on what Chrissy Lee was talking about earlier with different types of businesses being developed and innovation. There are businesses in downtown Elgin that their entire business model is enabling other businesses to operate within them. And so a great example of this would be Dream Hall, Maraki Market, and our coworking space at ETC Coworking. Businesses are either having memberships with them, or subleasing space with them in order to be able to operate within them, within that business model. So we noticed a significant number of these in 2020, and so we decided to break that number out and kind of count that on its own. And that's what you see with the multi-biz participation, which is the second line there, that we had 72 of those in 2021, as well as 258, 258 individual businesses. Moving forward into 2022, we've seen a significant, a significant increase in the participation of these multi-vendor businesses, as well as growth in the individual businesses themselves. So a lot of these individual businesses are, you know, small, single-person operations on up to the larger operations, but it really is, when you go into some of these office buildings, many of them have divided up their spaces into micro suites versus just having one tenant on a single floor. And that's something that you see reflected in these numbers. But adding all of that together and looking at the total number of businesses that are currently operating in downtown Elgin, we've seen growth through the pandemic, where a lot of communities have not seen growth. And so I think that that's really encouraging, and certainly is reflective of some of the low vacancy and things like that that we have right now. And with some of these properties changing hands and property owners making further investments in these properties, this is where we really start to see some converging trends of taking those, those next big steps. So in recognition of, in recognition of these surges in entrepreneurship that are, you know, trends being driven by COVID, and, and, you know, we're certainly all hearing about that in the media as well, we saw the need to support these businesses in having additional data and resources to be able to feel confident about locating in downtown Elgin, but also to make decisions about their business that are based on trends and the market of the community. And so with that, and with the additional support that the City Council was able to provide us on our last PSA agreement, we made an investment in some business, in a custom business analytics software that's called Size Up Elgin. So Size Up Elgin is a, is a custom-built portal that actually covers the entire community as well as the downtown, and it has several key functions. It has a benchmarking, benchmarking performance function. It gives them, there's a ability to find new customers and suppliers module on there. There's an advertising-based module, and then there's a demographic analysis module. So when you think of the big corporate companies like Starbucks, for example, this is the kind of information that they base some of their business decisions on, and many of them are paying firms to, to provide this information. But this is something that is now available to all Elgin businesses, complimentary of the DNA, in order to help them grow and feel confident about doing business here in Elgin. So it is, it is also available to all of our partner agencies. We know that the Small Business Development Center has actually shared with us that they shared this with 400 of their clients, and, and that they felt, that found that that was really beneficial. And we just launched this in February, so we're still exploring all of the opportunities with this new module. But this is some information from the company that I was able to get as of today, that there have been 650 individual use sessions on our, on our platform with over 40,000 individual searches. So that's an average of 64 searches per use. So that's when you go on the, on the module and you're plugging information in, and, and you're, you're clicking for a report. Every report that you're pulling, every time you're changing your parameters, or navigating to a different part of the, of the, of the portal, those are all the different searches that people are doing. So this is not just people going on here and doing one search and they're done. This is businesses going on there and continuously, you know, exploring the options based on some of their own, their own metrics and things like that that they have in their business plans, and seeing how that works with, with the community. We've also been able to, so this is, this is available 24 hours a day on our website at downtownelgin.com. We've also got flyers outside the Community Development Department at the counter there, so I really appreciate being able to put those there as well. So, you know, I've talked a lot about the, the changes that have happened over the last three years with just the, the focus of, of our work during the pandemic, really, you know, assisting businesses and, you know, problem solving, and essentially, you know, kind of triage over the last couple of years, and some of the different needs coming out of COVID, like the focus on our property owners and things like that. And we, you know, in partnership with the city and agencies like Explore Elgin, we see an opportunity to create our own downtown-specific plan. You know, it really is time for an updated plan to align with, with all of these other planning efforts and ensure that there's a cohesive game plan that all of us can feel confident about moving forward into the future, and kind of realigning those needs. And so with that, this is something that myself and our board has been talking about really since last fall. And, you know, we've, we're working on a, a consulting proposal from Main Street America to help facilitate this strategic planning effort. We have had an opportunity to apply for a grant with the Department of Commerce. The Department of Commerce in the state of Illinois is making a very decided investment in these type of planning efforts across the state, you know, economic development, COVID recovery-related plans. And so, you know, we're going to see what happens with that grant this summer. But the proposed timeline for this project will begin in the fall of, the, the fall/winter of 2022. And, you know, everybody has been involved in this conversation from the inception. You know, Chrissy Lee mentioned coming and presenting her strategic plan to our board. There's been conversations with the consulting group, and all of that information is going to be shared and help inform the effort that we are making with this downtown-specific plan. So I just want to appreciate everybody's, and everybody's involvement in that. We feel that this is also going to dovetail with some of these upcoming plan, strategic planning efforts that the city is doing, the Parks Department, the Arts Plan that Amanda's going to talk about later today. And this really is the downtown game plan piece of this, both on the economic and business growth side of things, but also how do we align, build capacity and align the DNA to support that direction over the next three years. So we've already, downtown stakeholders, our business owners, our property owners, our downtown residents, their input is going to be really important in this project. City, appropriate city staff departments participating in this project is going to be really important. And I would also like to personally invite all of you as elected officials to participate in this project as well, very similar to how the process went with Chrissy Lee's plan. This will be specific to the downtown, and everybody's input is really important to make sure that we're kind of all pointing in the same direction about what does the future of downtown need to look like over the next three years, and what is all of our role in that. So I'm just really excited to introduce that to you tonight, and with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gallow? Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer and Steve, and everyone else in the audience who helped with this organization. Those of you who stayed for this part of the presentation. So I, I used to be a board member with the NA, and one of the tasks I, I guess handled was trying to calculate volunteer hours and what kind of value was brought to the organization. And, you know, not all volunteer hours are created equal. When I was 19, I had to do, I mean, I did community service hours, like pulling weeds, and that's worth something for an organization. But then you have individuals like Steve who, you know, brings a certain level of expertise, and the value of his time is very impressive. So I just want to say that because all of you have brought a tremendous amount of valuable skills, contributions to this organization, to other organizations in downtown. We've got new faces, thanks to the farmer market, Dan anchoring the breakdown setup of the market. So there's a lot that I could get into, right, because as part of this organization. Some of the things that I saw tonight are new. Some of them are, you know, projects that have been in place for the last few years. And, you know, something that recently popped up, which I want to say thank you for, there was an event at the Eastside Community Garden, and they had actually fallen a little short on equipment, and DNA was able to help out in a pinch. And so that was nice to see an event come together with a neighborhood group, helping another neighborhood group, for people to just throw a party in the park. Some of the questions I had earlier lead me into this question. So on collaboration, I guess there's the general question of how, or if there is a plan in place already for general collaboration on different marketing events or any other special events. But the specific one was the new resident brochure, because I've spoken with staff internally about identifying new residents and welcoming them to the community. So I guess that's where I'll launch my first main question is, how do you foresee collaboration happening, whether it's between you, the City U, and CBB? And is there any specifics in place to, again, like try to automate that and trigger, make sure everything is nicely laid out?
Sure, I'd be happy to talk about that. So this is, this is, a lot of the initiatives that we take on are based on identifying needs. And if we're getting frequent requests for information, we see that as an opportunity to create a solution for that. And so we have very strong relationships with all of the different volunteer neighborhood groups that surround the collar neighborhoods of downtown. So, you know, we, we have a monthly committee meeting where we're all just kind of comparing notes. And a lot of those neighborhood groups are developing plans for distributing to new residents within their neighborhoods. And so, for example, Gifford Park is really, is really big on this right now, and this is creating a tool or a solution for them to have something that's concise, that's easy to drop off. And, you know, we're going to be working with the different neighborhood groups to, to be distribution sources for that, as well as we've had a lot of outreach from residential realtors. So we'll definitely be promoting this as an opportunity to the residential real estate professionals in the area, that we have this resource free and available for them. But if there's other distribution channels that want to get involved in this, it's just a matter of, matter of us printing more, printing more brochures. And so we're certainly open to partnering with everybody that wants to partner on helping get these in the hands of new residents, so that it's not long before they know all the great things that this community has to offer.
Okay. And then, so, again, being internally, or being internal, you know, conversations that we've had either when I was board member or since then, DNA operates with some tools internally that I think could be really helpful to small businesses, as well as the collaborative efforts that you have going on. So I guess the, the challenge that I'll issue tonight is a couple. So for, I know one of the objectives is outreach to residents, and I'll step up to help out with this. I would really love to see a cleanup event in the downtown. I know, you know, Gifford Park, I've contributed a few over there. I'd like to see one in the downtown. And then I really, I guess, just to cut to the chase, what I want to see from us as an organization and working with auxiliary organizations, is that we do start to try and automate some of this, because a lot of this is volunteer work, and it's, it's really complex to get all these things to line up. And so what I would really like to see, it doesn't have to be specifically the Airtable, which is a platform that DNA leverages right now, but between DNA, you know, myself as a council member, or the committees that are trying to work on entrepreneurism and small business assistance, is to try and introduce more residents and more business owners to these new tools, where up until recently, people had to pay a developer to build tools for them. And then if they needed to make an adjustment, then they had to re-engage with that developer, and it's expensive. We've now gotten to the point where a lot of this is visual and it's drag and drop. So that's something that I really do want to see come out of this. I don't say it lightly because, you know, it's a little getting into the weeds here. But that's something I would really like to see in this next contract, is that this is an effort that's deployed for our small business owners, because they definitely need help just, you know, from pandemic showed they had to navigate new protocols, and then they also had to still worry about hiring, they had to worry about inventory. And if we can help them, I think that would be a big boost to let them work on their business rather than working in their business for the next few years. So I think that's pretty much everything I had. Again, thank you, again, for the presentation. Thank you, everybody in the audience who either works for or is volunteer for the DNA. And I think that's all I got.
Any other questions? Ms. Paul?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Very thorough. Excited to hear about the business analytics software that you will be... hear about the business analytics software that you will be using moving forward. I think that'll provide some good information. A number of questions, probably the most pressing in my mind are, what types of businesses are you specifically targeting for, to fill some of the vacant properties downtown? And how are you going about doing that?
That's a very good question. So, another initiative of our Economic Development Committee, forgive me for not including this in the presentation, we were kind of trying to keep it concise and there's so many things that we do, you know, we could be up here for an hour or so. I'm happy to speak to the questions. We developed a priority list of businesses, which are businesses that we have basically determined as an agency through study of market trends, but also community surveys and literally gathering information from the community of the kind of businesses that they want to see. We've developed this priority list of businesses and there's nine different businesses on there. I'm happy to share that information with you, you know, after the meeting. But essentially, when we are searching for businesses, those are the businesses that we're searching for. Right now, it really comes down to available spaces. And sometimes, if we know that a space is going to be coming out, coming available, we're trying to get out ahead of it with that property owner or the new incoming property owner or, you know, however that transition is happening, to identify that these are the kind of businesses that we're most interested in bringing in. And so that's what we're prioritizing our search efforts towards, is the businesses on that list. That's something that'll be continuously updated. I would imagine that that is something that'll also be looked at through our strategic planning project, to identify the best way to further utilize that and continue to update it ongoing.
And when was the last time that that, that was updated? In terms of, you said, like the community surveys and things that were used to develop that list?
That was developed in 2021. So that was a very current initiative. It was published mid-year. It does live on our website in, in a blog-type format under Business Resources. And when we, you know, are talking with, whether it's realtors who have clients that might be interested in coming down here, business clients, we will, that's one of the links that we will share with them. So, kind of whatever the needs are from any person that's doing outreach or anybody that we're connecting with, we're sending them follow-up information of whatever they need, whatever resources they need to best meet their needs. And that's typically one of those resources, as well as, we have a blog about downtown assets. That is something that was specifically requested by the commercial real estate community, based on the fact that they sometimes have clients looking at buildings here that are not familiar with the area. And we want to make sure they understand where they're purchasing and what kind of assets are here. So those are two of the most common pieces of information that we're sharing.
Can you name, I know you said there are nine on the list, just a couple?
The top requested business is a brewery. There are also, we are also really looking to bring in more retail-type concepts. Cannabis dispensary is, is on that list as well as a downtown hotel.
Great, thank you.
Can I jump in here? I found on the website.
Hold on.
Sorry.
Thank you. A couple other questions I had. The new brochure that you mentioned in terms of that you're printing it, and I'm assuming that will be available and also distributed electronically as well. I saw something in, I think, the memo about downtown bike racks. I know we've been talking about that for a while. Can you provide an update on where we stand with those?
My understanding is that a city planner from the Community Development Department has been in ongoing communication with IGA about reactivating that grant. And so, I don't have more information than that about where that's at, but I do know that the, the state timeline for that project has been sort of continuously pushed out through COVID. You know, I have the impression that some of the state departments were focusing their resources towards, focusing their time resources towards, you know, immediate COVID-related impacts. And so some of those things have, have kind of been taking a while to get going again. And that's one of those items.
Perhaps, is that something that staff has an update on?
Not that I would be able to provide you with accurate information at this moment, sorry.
Okay. You mentioned cannabis. Near and dear to my heart in terms of trying to get a dispensary downtown. Can you provide an update on, are we seeing interest? I know that there's been a lot of litigation around the licensing. Can you speak to whether or not the changes that we've made as a city in terms of our zoning are conducive to bringing folks in that business downtown?
Certainly. We have worked with a variety of clients over the last couple of years. And for everybody that doesn't know kind of what has happened with the state's approval for this, essentially, the first licenses were people that already, businesses that already had medical licenses. And once those, there was a timeline for placing those licenses, that was not, was one of the few timelines that was not extended by the state during COVID. So essentially, there was a rush to place those licenses with the next appropriate space. And essentially, that is, we're still waiting for that next batch of licenses to be released by the litigation process that you mentioned. So essentially, I don't have the impression that any zoning-related decisions that the city of Elgin, that this body has made, is, is what's holding anything back. You know, we've continued to see interest even while people are waiting through this litigation. But, you know, everybody's kind of waiting to see what happens. We do have some spaces downtown that we've worked very closely with the Community Development Department to pre-vet. And so when, when businesses of this nature are considering downtown, we have, we have several ones that we are pointing to that have been specifically vetted for this use, both with our Community Development Department, but also a consultant, a cannabis education consultant from the industry has weighed in on this as well.
Mr. Malat has some information. Update.
Our cannabis expert.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Only to essentially say ditto to what Ms. Cola added, is that there's nothing that we believe is, is creating an impediment through our local regulations to, to having cannabis businesses come into Elgin. The problem has been these court cases, as Councilman Thorne can, can add, especially, once this clears, people will be willing to make investments in terms of locking down properties either by lease or by property. But without, but with this, with uncertainty hanging over their head, they're rightly justified by not putting their money forward or spending money on applications. And so we're hoping that this will be very, very soon.
Thank you. Because the, from my understanding, the, like you said, the licenses and the dispensaries we're seeing opening up right now are people who already had medical licenses for, for cannabis.
Yeah, the most recent wave of businesses opening, for example, the one in Dundee would be an example of just that very thing. So, yeah, that's about all there. I, I will say that there are, there is some recent updates coming out of the state that suggest that the legal matter is starting to get resolved, but I don't really want to speak to that in any further detail, because I'm not close enough to that particular piece of the situation.
Great. Happy to see First Fridays. I think that that's really important to kind of brand ourselves and bringing people downtown around, again, special events. Don't have to reiterate my support for things that gather people together, bring people downtown to support our businesses, and listen to live music, have a beverage or two, and just really, you know, kind of get back out since, you know, post-COVID. So I think people are really looking forward to that.
Yes, and certainly, just some of the initial feedback from some of our customers onsite at, at the markets that we've had so far would reflect that.
Great. Just a couple of other questions. Have you had any, what are your plans or have you started to collaborate with your, your, your neighbor, your new neighbor, the new minority business development agency that is located in our downtown, in, in terms of helping to assist businesses in the downtown and assist you with maybe perhaps recruiting businesses to downtown?
Yes, we've had a, we've had a meeting with them and are learning a lot about each other's programs. They seem to be in a very large outreach effort right now at the state level. And so, we have joined them for meetings with clients, for example. The, the specifics of the type of businesses that they work with have to be of a, of a certain size and scale in order for them to be taken on as a client. And so, some of our businesses do, some of our small businesses or our smallest businesses in downtown Elgin don't necessarily meet their requirements. But we do see this as a huge resource and opportunity for them to bring, help bring one of those larger clients in here, from, you know, some of their, their outreach efforts on a larger scale. And we would certainly, in that event, be on board to help, help facilitate that operationally with the relationships and the, the outreach that we do to the different property owners and kind of whatever the needs are there.
Last question. How are you calculating the vacancy rate that you have listed in your presentation?
That's from CoStar. That was information that was gathered with the help of our partner, Tony Lusenko at the Elgin Development Group. And so that's reflective of, of the commercial real estate market numbers, based on what's listed on the MLS.
Great, thank you.
Anything else from Ms. Cola? Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer and Steve, nice presentation. I'd like to ask a few questions as well. What are the three accomplishments you are most excited about that you achieved in the last 12 months?
I would say that one of the accomplishments that I think is going to be the most significant for downtown Elgin is the approval of the 42-page project. You know, anytime a unused or underutilized building of that size and scale is going to be utilized again, that's a huge win for everything that's happening around it. And so I would point to that project as well as the Judson project and some of the other projects that are going on in the redevelopment of existing buildings as, as significant achievements in the last 12 months. I would also point to the achievement of continuing to be able to operate the farmer's market through the pandemic as a huge achievement. There was a lot of communities that were not able to do that. And so the, the amount of markets being operated in the state of Illinois over the last three years, even though it was allowed by the state, did shrink back significantly. And some of those are, are struggling to reopen. So I would, I would certainly say that that's been a huge win. And I would also say that being able to maintain the amount of businesses that we've been able to maintain in downtown Elgin, you know, I don't want to put any personal confidential information out there on behalf of some of the businesses, but there's a number of situations where we've been able to step in and prevent businesses from, you know, through some of the help and resources, prevent them from either going under or, you know, some other similar fate. And so, just being able to, to conserve the level of businesses in our downtown area when other areas are seeing their downtowns being gutted is something that I'm personally very proud of.
Okay, good. What are the strategic work plans and procedures for the last two years?
So for the last two years, it was much more of a short-term based plan. I'd be happy to share that, to share that plan with you after the, after the meeting. Essentially, it was developing the, the business priority list, a lot of the business support initiatives that were keeping those businesses going, and leading into some of the projects like Size Up and things like that. So we are kind of at the end of that, coming out of COVID. And so we're in, in recognition of moving forward into a post-COVID environment, that's why we're developing this new plan.
And how are you currently recruiting and selecting board members? How do board members and stakeholders vote or approve the board members? How does that happen?
So that is outlined in our bylaws. Steve, I don't know if you want to add to this a little bit?
Yeah, sure. So, basically what we look for is people that are helping out on committees and getting people involved in the actual organization and things around that first. Then we kind of work with them. And if they're a good fit for the board, if it's a position that we need from around the community, there's a number of different aspects that we look for when kind of looking for a good board member. There's a lot of people that are really great volunteers, but they're not necessarily good board members. So we have to kind of suss that out and make sure that we're, we're getting what we need to be able to push the envelope forward, move the organization forward.
Some of, one of those requirements is serving on a DNA committee for at least three months. They either need to be a downtown stakeholder, whether that is a business owner, building owner, or a resident, or they have to, we do accept committee board members that are not downtown stakeholders if they have a skill or a resource that, that their knowledge is a resource to the community or a resource to the board that we don't already have. So, for example, I would point to, you know, Amanda Harris is on our board. She works for the city of Elgin. She does not live, you know, she's not a downtown stakeholder, but she's leading the arts elements of what's happening in downtown Elgin. So that's significant to, to our work. We have another board member who is a leader of a downtown stakeholder, which is the, the literacy connection, which is operated out of the library. So, you know, this person is essentially the, the leader of a downtown agency that is benefiting from our work and can weigh in on what is beneficial or not beneficial to their organization.
Okay. And out of curiosity, what is the mix of residents, business owners, and property owners?
Do you mean in downtown?
Yeah.
I don't have that information with me. That is, I mean, we do have a, the business count information that I shared today. We do have some demographic information about the volume of residents in downtown Elgin that I can share. And, you know, property ownership situations are, are a very sensitive topic. And so some properties are owned by a trust, not an individual, for example, things like that. And so, you know, that, those are pieces of information that, that are somewhat sensitive, but we can certainly share with the city of Elgin leadership, you know, as, as all of the information that we track is something that's available to, to all of you on request, based on what the needs are there.
No, I'm just curious, because you keep saying residents and business owners and property owners, and that's why I was curious about that.
Sure.
What are the number of return surveys you receive to create your stats?
Which stats?
Any stats. Why do you do surveys?
We do surveys just to gather information and feedback from the businesses. We've done a business survey, for example, the last two years, because in a COVID environment, there's not, there wasn't as much face-to-face opportunities there. So I don't have that number of surveys in front of me, but that's not how we're gathering those numbers. So I, I think I need a little more specifics on which.
Yeah, just like any survey that you do, what's the return on it? That's all?
For example, the farmer's market survey, we typically have like 85 to 100 responses on the business survey, different types of business surveys that we've done. It could be anywhere from 25 to 50 to 60. It just kind of depends on what the topic.
Out of how many, do you think?
Out of the total number of businesses downtown.
Okay, the farmer's market, okay.
Yeah, the, the. So for example, for example, if we're doing a, a survey based on the beverage crawl and businesses participating in the beverage crawl, it's, it's only going to be the number of businesses that were participating in that. So it, it depends on what the ask is and what the subset of information.
That's who you send it to and ask about, right? But what's the return rate is what I'm asking.
It varies.
Varies?
It varies pretty widely. We find that if it's a really hot-button topic, we get more responses, like the nightmare survey, we had 55 businesses that responded really, really quickly. Sometimes if it's just a general request for information, you know, it's not as, it's not as high of a return, but we still think that that information is valuable. So it's really just an opportunity for businesses to share. For example, we asked a question on the survey this year, are you planning any projects this year or any, any investments? So we can hear from them in advance, like, here's what I'm planning on doing this year. And then I know what kind of work I'm going to be reaching out to them to support. So that's not necessarily about generating a metric, that's about gathering information.
Okay, my last question is, did you say seven property owners sold in the last year? Is that what you said?
Let me scroll back to that. So we've had eight properties change hands or change ownership within the last 12 months with two more that are currently in process. There's some, you know, properties under contract, but things haven't closed yet.
And do you have a survey or a survey for both? That would, it would be interesting to see, like an exit, exit survey or for properties that have sold or bought, to hear, you know, why they're leaving or why somebody's coming in. Because I really enjoy hearing the story like Steve, I really enjoy hearing that. But do you have like a survey like that for people who are leaving? But do you have like a survey like that for people who are leaving or people that are coming back?
Typically, those businesses share that feedback with us directly because we're already working with them as a client. We do have some confidentiality that we maintain for them in working with us so that some of their personal business information is not being shared in a way that would hurt them as business owners or limit their ability to operate. So we do have a little bit of caution with some of that, especially if we're, you know, say stepping into a system with a business that's having some issues. We don't want to put that information out there publicly unnecessarily. But certainly, the property owners, we did do a property owner survey, the same as a business owner survey at the beginning of the year. I believe we had 16 responses. Many of those property owners own multiple properties. So, you know, that was significant feedback.
I think what I need to do is sit down and meet with you, and then we can have more.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to work. We have a ton of data, DNA, and I'm just showing you such a snapshot that it's really hard to paint the whole, like, global picture of it. But I'm more than happy to work through, you know, walk through some of those things with anybody that's interested.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Roshnberger?
Yes, quickly because I know it's getting late. First of all, you know, this seems to be the year of consultants and strategic planning. I'm glad we're all doing it at the same time. I know City Council has asked about this for many years, and maybe post-COVID was the moment that it had to happen. So as the city does strategic planning, we're so happy to work with Downtown Neighborhood Association and the downtown as part of all our future vision. I want to say that, you know, when you talked to us about Size Up Elgin, I jumped on. And I just was trying to mention to councilperson Powell here, it does say that nine most-wanted businesses in downtown Elgin, which is the first time I've ever heard that anyone articulated, is number one restaurants, and we're talking ethnic and vegan, et cetera, beverage concepts, brewery, entertainment, lots of ideas there, clothing and apparel. I think people need a reason after they're in the restaurant to walk around Elgin a little bit. Cannabis dispensary is number five. I don't know if that should go up further. Unique retail, food market, convenience store, lodging, and I know we've always talked about lodging downtown, and then office businesses of which we have. But I, you know, I do appreciate that being articulated. I think it needs to get closer. I had to go through Size Up Elgin to find that, but it was very clear and well-articulated. I think I've asked EDG a similar question. What are the five types of businesses we want to recruit to Elgin? Do we have a strategic plan for that? And I've never heard anyone articulate that. So thank you for that.
Thank you. If I could just add to that, you can actually, there's actually links for that priority list in several places on the website. So you will accidentally, on purpose, stumble upon it when you're doing several different things on our website, and that's not an accident. That's the genius of Jennifer Arntz over here, our website master who has developed downtownelgin.com into what it is.
Yes, it is nice. It's that little sidebar that I thought was so excellent, but it's not on the first page. So I don't know. But anyway, still, nice website. Size Up Elgin looks really great. You know, I'm looking forward to the strategic plan. I think, and we have talked, we've had these stats that we've been talking about before because there's four possibilities of targets, target markets we want downtown. They would be people that work downtown have certain needs, visitors to our downtown have certain needs, residents have certain needs, our property owners have certain needs. And so I think, but we've kind of talked about those numbers in the past, and I don't have them off the top of my head either. And finally, just a few little things I hate to bring up. I've had several people talk to me about that they felt downtown was a little dirty and that they didn't have a good experience going to restaurants. Just to, I didn't hear that often, but recently. And I've heard that Spring Street would like lights. I know you're a big, you're a big person that happened to make that happen.
Yeah, well, I would love to see lights on Spring Street as well. I know the businesses are certainly open to it. It's a matter of doing outreach to the properties and getting that in place and obviously, you know, the city installation and all of those things that go along with it. I have to, getting the lights involves me convincing property owners to sign off on us putting an eye hook in their building. And if properties have projects in process and things like that, sometimes it's a timing thing. So, but there certainly have been conversations about that. I totally share that in agreement with that opportunity. And there's been a lot of work and a lot of open communication about the cleanliness opportunities with our land maintenance team. I want to appreciate Steve Whalen and all of the guys on his team. The downtown street sweeping that was able to be executed more regularly with the changes in the parking has been significant in getting, like, fall leaves and garbage off the streets and things like that. We're definitely seeing the benefits there. And with the farmer's market and things like that, there's been much more sidewalk cleaning, spot cleaning, things like that. And, you know, myself and our volunteers and our team are certainly helping, especially in a space like the farmer's market zone, make sure everything's picked up after the event, something that we're very careful about. But I appreciate the feedback on that as well.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be really quick. I know it's getting late, so I'm just going to kind of run through some things, okay? First thing is your board. Is your board full right now?
It is.
Is that capacity? Okay, all right. That was one. Next thing, I really, I really appreciate that the basic membership is free, right? So that's like the foundation of it all as far as when you talk about engagement and connectivity. So I really appreciate that. And then also too, the data as far as like breaking down what the economic impact of the farmer's market has been overall, I think that's really crucial in telling the story is the data, right? And also too as well, I really appreciate that you all are looking outside of the box, thinking outside of the box when we talk about Biz Now and then also Main Street Illinois Conference. I've been to a few Biz Now events, well, actually, myself and Councilwoman Roshnberger together have went to a few. And I think she's probably even been to more than I have. And so I love to see that you are going to those conferences because you get a lot of ideas and you have a large network. So you never know what you're going to get out of it. So I think there's a lot of value there. Councilman Good brought up the new resident brochure. And you might have said this, so I apologize if I'm asking the same question twice, but how are you getting that new brochure to new residents? What is your main?
So we are distributing it through partnerships with realtors and neighborhood associations. So we are not, we don't have the means to distribute it internally to every resident in Elgin without some sort of solution like mail. Then it would come down to what is the funding for that and what is the mechanism for identifying every new resident in Elgin? That is certainly something we'd have to contemplate as a budget initiative, and, you know, that is, that's probably something that's a larger discussion. But through these relationships that we have with the neighborhood groups who are engaging new people that are moving into their communities, we develop this tool as a resource for them to have something professional and polished to present that new resident with in order for them to start building relationships with the people that are coming into our communities in the collar neighborhoods. And just to speak to data for a moment, one of the pieces of information that has been most valuable for us from Size Up internally as an agency is to better understand our surroundings and the community and just the density and things like that. And it's certainly helpful to be able to articulate that to any clients. But within a two-mile radius of my office, which is at 31 South Grove, is over 95,000 residents within a two-mile radius. And I would consider a one-mile radius to be walking distance to the downtown. And so that's the majority of our community that is impacted and in a symbiotic relationship with everything that's happening downtown, from the impact of property values on both sides to having that immediate audience of people that live walking distance that don't need to travel to come down here. One of the things that further brings that data forward is data from the farmer's market with customer surveys that Councilwoman Martinez was asking about. We ask the customers to tell us what zip code they live in. And so we know after several years of gathering this information from the customers that are self-reporting it, that 75%, approximately 75% of the customers that come to the farmer's market are Elgin residents, and we know which zip code they live in. So we're continuously improving the information that we're gathering and trying to find the best ways to gather as much information as possible. And, you know, we're going to bring forward the best information available that we have based on the resources that are available to us forward to you as the city of Elgin through our partnership with the PSA agreement.
Okay. And I see that brochure is a way to pull people in downtown who may not normally go downtown. So you talk about these neighborhood groups, there are some on the website who, as I said earlier, are notorious, well, we say they are notorious for going up and down randomly, so it could be a way to pull people into the center of our city. So that's awesome. Size Up, I love it. I'm glad that that's being used. I'm not going to go any further on that. The strategic plan, as Councilwoman Roshnberger brought up, I'm really happy to see that being done and also just the connectivity between all of the organizations that's happening. I think that's awesome that you are helping each other. So I'm looking to see big things. And just a little bit of feedback, I recently heard that from some downtown business owners that there seems to be an uptick in bugs. So, you know, are we, are we, and I'm talking about like nets.
I should be bad to the Fox River, personally.
Yeah, so, yeah, so nets, mosquitoes, things of that nature. So, you know, do we do any fumigating downtown at all?
We don't, but that's one of those things that, I know this because of my background in business operations management, businesses can work with a company to do treatments for things like that. There are companies that specifically work with businesses. I know that a particular restaurant that I used to run in the past, which was in a river valley, had an issue with spiders all around the door. And so we had periodic treatments during the season for things like that. And so if folks are looking for that resource, you know, that's the kind of service calls that we get to, you know, hey, who should we talk to about this? What's the best way to go about this? And I'm happy to have those conversations and, you know, I understand what they're talking about, so.
All right. Well, great. And I should have started with this, but excellent presentation. Thank you, Jennifer, doing a wonderful job. Steve, not as good of a job, but I'll take it. But no, thank you for the presentation. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Mr. Thorne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I have just a couple of things. I know it's getting late. First of all, I thought I would shed some light on the dispensary licenses. The issue finally came to a head and all the agreements and were done with the problems with the state. The state admitted their fault. And they started with the lotteries, the long-awaited additional lotteries. They had one yesterday, one today, and we'll have a final one tomorrow. That's 185 additional licenses issued. The connection that I have, of which you know, she was awarded two yesterday. Her priority is Elgin. She was born and raised in Elgin. She's a minority business owner. She already now has two licenses in Michigan and is building those stores out. The word is that after tomorrow, then they have a verification timeframe before the actual licenses are allowed to be utilized. Once that happens, which is about between two and three months, then is when they're going to look at properties because they'll be guaranteed. And Elgin is her priority. She is going to be looking at properties prior to that. She already has done so. In fact, as you know, we've been around town together. Timeframe, you're looking at then, depending on the facility, depending on the building, depending on how it's laid out, the requirements are very stringent. You're looking at four to six months build-out for a facility to be opened. That means you're looking at a operation to be open in the first part of 2023. So that's the update there for what we're looking at, and downtown is where she wants it. She did make a comment that possibly Elgin might want to look at the fact that they're allowing, I think, four licenses. And some towns that got some already only were allowing one. And that could have something to do with the fact that these people don't want competitors. So they want to get more business. So as this starts to be talked about more, coming to fruition of reality, maybe one on each side of the river might be a good way to adjust for the interim and then wait and see how the industry grows. Just a thought.
I appreciate that feedback, Councilmember Thorne, and the individual that you've been speaking with is somebody that we've also been working with and has been very helpful and, you know, is very involved in the industry, very knowledgeable. So I appreciate that opportunity. The nature of the layout of downtown, with all of the different many setback requirements and state limitations, as well as, you know, things like the requirement to be setback from a park or a school and things like that, or different types of businesses, being that downtown is such a condensed area, there's only a very limited number of properties that would even be eligible just based on that. But then also looking at what the needs of the operations of these businesses need from a security standpoint to, you know, all of the different operational functions, there is a very limited number of spaces that would be appropriate for this within the downtown. And so, you know, we're looking to help kind of close the gap on that as quickly as possible when everybody's ready to move forward.
Certainly. I'm well aware of it. I'm glad that you're expounding on that so that the council understands it as well. I did get a message from Greg Shannon that he wanted me, if I had the opportunity, to thank you for all you've done, that you've made a big difference. And obviously, we all know who Greg is. And frankly, those are my exact words. And I remember at one time stating that the city hit a home run when they brought you onboard, and I agree with that more now than ever. Your presentation was great. What you've achieved is great, and I'll be supporting you moving forward always. Thank you, Jennifer and Steve.
Thank you so much.
Anything else at this time? Okay, we need a motion? Is there a move in second for approval? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Absolutely.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 9-0. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item D is a Arts and Events Market Study and Strategic Planning Services Agreement with Create Today Consulting. I know that I mentioned presentation earlier, but it's not a presentation. I just asked Ms. Harris to provide the elevator pitch to the council. And if there's any questions in response to that, she'll be ready to answer. So please, tell us what you want to do, Ms. Harris.
Oh, boy, that's no pressure at all. All right. Thank you so much. I know it's late. I'll keep it so fast. So last year and the year before, obviously, we had a pandemic. Before then, we had City Council approve market study for special events. And even before that, back in 2017, City Council approved a public art plan. Fast forward now back into 2022, and City Council did approve in the 2022 budget a market study and strategic plan for all the arts and events. And that's what we're here to talk about today. Create Today is a company based out of New York. They are a women-minority-owned business, and they lead with the community, which is one of the main reasons we decided to select them. They have four real phases of this plan, listen, learn, plan, and ensure success. They break down a little bit into how I like to think of it as questions. So listen is what we are doing and how we are doing. So it's not just about the events, it's also about our venues. What are we doing? How are we doing it? Why are we doing? Why are we doing it? Really asking all of those questions. Learn is the next phase, and that's really about what should we be doing? That's really where we involve the community. We have lots of focus groups. What are you wanting to see? What are we doing that you love? What are we not doing that you would want here? What can we do better? And then planning, this is where we start thinking about what programming we're doing that could meet those needs that we found in those first two phases. And importantly, this is also where we start to look at a sustainable financial model for the arts, including those venues. And then lastly is ensuring success. This is where we start to build that strategic plan using all the information from the previous three phases. Create Today is here on the Zoom call to answer any specific questions, and I can address those as well.
Any questions for Ms. Harris? Ms. Rochenberger?
Hi, I know it's late and thanks for being here. I guess just, you know, it was a brief overview, but I guess my one question is, do you also take a view of the type of events that are going on within, you know, 15, 20 miles of us and communities around us?
Yes, that's an excellent question. So part of one of the phases here is a market study to see what is happening in the Chicago Land area. I believe it's a 50-mile radius is what we have set out.
Right, so as we know, for example, Nightmare is sort of unique to us, so sets us apart. But I understand that we kind of compete, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else from Ms. Harris? Mr. Stefan?
Just a quick question along those same lines, Amanda. Will the consultant be looking into other venues that aren't under city control? I'm thinking, obviously, the biggest one is Blizzard and M-Pac. There was some announcement recently that St. Ed's is going to build a 250-seat theater, the Black Box, the Elgin Academy. I could think of others in the town. But how those will affect what we do and how we work with them or work against them or however that works out, that will be considered in some fashion?
Yes, definitely. One thing we want to be very cognizant of is not duplicating efforts and duplicating events. And venues is a huge part of that. There are things popping up in their events, venues that have shuttered their doors. So that's all one big part of it. And as both Jen and Chris Lee spoke about earlier, this is, and some of you have mentioned as well, this is the season for strategic planning. So it's really evaluating all of those pieces and working together.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? We need a motion?
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Skipping ahead to item J, agreement with Mobile Treks Incorporated for the installation and maintenance of a Tactic Central Unix-branded advanced traffic management system. An advanced traffic management system has been an organizational goal of the Public Works Department for many years now, and it's currently included in its five-year traffic signal capital improvement plan. ATMSs are a combination of hardware and software, including traffic signal control devices that are connected through a communication network to improve transportation system efficiency, enhance mobility, improve safety, reduce fuel consumption, and increase the economic productivity for users within the network from a central location. This is going to enable the city's traffic department to manage issues that are occurring at the traffic signals without having to send somebody out in a truck to open the big silver boxes next to those. They can do it remotely. It's a great initiative, and we're looking forward to the efficiencies that they'll provide.
Move for approval.
Second. Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved 9-0.
Item K is the designation of 54 South Liberty Street within the Elgin Bungalow Thematic Historic District. This district enables property owners to voluntarily nominate bungalows for historic designation regardless of the property's location in the city. Inclusion in this district makes the properties eligible to receive grants under the city's historic architectural rehab program, and the owners must obtain a no-cost certificate of appropriateness for exterior work to the structure. The owners of the bungalow at 54 South Liberty Street applied for and have been recommended for designation by the Elgin Heritage Commission. This will bring the number of bungalows to nine within the city, historic bungalows.
Move for approval.
Second. Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited that this has moved up to nine. There's a lot of neat homes, especially with the bungalows. I kind of wish that this would be the same approach we would take with homes that are of historical value rather than designating a whole entire area. And, you know, I think we could probably put more money into homes rather than a whole entire area. And I'm speaking about the Watch District. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anything else? Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item L is an executive recruitment services agreement with Baker Tilly US LLP. The city has two executive leadership positions currently open, one because of recent retirement and the other for a new position approved with the 2022 budget. To facilitate the recruiting, staff is recommending hiring an executive recruitment firm that will assist the city in managing the process. Recruiting services for a third executive position are additionally being procured in advance to prepare for reasonably expected retirements later this year. Staff received three proposals as we're recommending the approval of an agreement with Baker Tilly in the amount of $68,000.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Powell?
Yes, glad to see this and helping to fill some very critical positions in the city. I guess I would like to see, it would be nice if we use them to fill the still vacant diversity, the DEI position that we've been struggling to fill. I know that our new DEI consultant is working on that. And perhaps you have an update on where things stand with that position and the work that they're doing and when we could expect to see some progress there, because it's been quite a while.
I know that the two of us communicated, the work with Inquest began in June, and there were two consecutive meetings with senior staff to begin that process. As I've also indicated to you, I am not going to commit to a specific date in which the DEI consultant will be hired. There is work that the organization needs to do to identify the needs and how that role will function, particularly with the HR director. The role will be filled, but I don't want to rush it as we did last year because that did not result in success. But you have my commitment to know that we are moving forward on that, and when the time is right, we will make it happen. And the plan is to do it sooner rather than later, but not before it's ready.
So we're waiting for our, for Inquest to kind of help frame what that position looks like, its role within the organization, and then maybe at that point, we may end up using an executive search firm such as this company to fill it if necessary.
Perhaps, but even more important than that, or from a more even basic level, the organization is making determinations and we're working through to determine the need, desire, the scope of the DEI initiatives that are going to be going through the organization. Once there's an identification of what's needed, what's lacking, the directions we want to go, that will help inform the skill set or what we're looking for with the DEI officer, knowing that that's something that will be, that person will be working in conjunction with the HR director, because the DEI initiatives are essentially, they're going to be occurring through recruitment efforts, through onboarding, through organizational development as people move through the ranks, training in senior leadership positions, and ultimately in succession planning. And it's, it's not with a matter of, well, I've been with this organization for close to 30 years, and it's just, it's just a function that's never existed. And it's not because of any lack of desire by the organization. It's simply something that comes in terms of priorities. And there has always been a desire to, and I'm not faulting this, focus, focus the funding on outside efforts for what's best for the community. But with the mandate that's received from the council for this DEI direction, it's going to provide opportunities to provide training, regular training, for an organization of more than 1,000 people for the first time that I've been hired here. And so that's all part of the long process that will get us to hiring the DEI consultant or the DEI officer.
Yes, and I heard all of that and appreciate that. And obviously, there's already been some discussion from the council as to what we felt that role needed to entail as well. So hopefully, that hasn't been forgotten. So thank you.
It hasn't, and that I know will be part of discussions going forward to ensure that there's alignment on that.
Great.
We have a motion. Court, call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item N is the acceptance of public improvements and easements within the site located at 1325 Bluff City Boulevard. Vantage Truck is located at this location. As a condition to its approval by the city, it was required to construct public sidewalk and stormwater detention to serve the development. The development included, also included the construction of public sidewalk along Bluff City Boulevard, a portion of which is located on private property with stormwater's management facilities to meet the city's stormwater requirements. Staff is recommending acceptance of the public sidewalk, associated easements for the sidewalk, and the stormwater management facility. Yeah, no, I'll go back. We're jumping around tonight. I know, thank you.
Item N, right? Yeah. Move for approval. We need a second.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, item N. Any discussion? Court, call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Good to see everybody's paying attention. All right, item M, let's try it again. Acceptance of parcel one in the park, excuse me, acceptance of parcel one park of the Ponds of Stony Creek subdivision located at 3638 Eldorado Road. The developer of this 278-acre residential development has completed and is offering for acceptance by the city the first of two neighborhood parks. This first is a 4.17-acre park located on the north side of the subdivision. The second is a 5.23-acre park located on the south side. The developer spent more than $540,000 on the improvements to this Phase One park, including playground, picnic shelter, and a splash pad.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
No, I'm sorry, yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item O, right?
Item O.
Acceptance of the Parkway improvements within the Highland Woods Neighborhoods A, D, and E subdivisions. Crown Community Development, development from 2006 to 2008, with home construction being delayed following 2007. This prevented the developer from installing the Parkway improvements comprising sidewalks, trees, mulch, topsoil, sod until the homes were constructed. The developer recently completed the Parkway improvements and is now ready for acceptance by the city.
Move for approval.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Announcements from the council. Ms. Powell?
Yeah, just one really quick one. I mentioned it earlier this evening. Want to say kudos to the African-American Coalition of Kane County, all of the sponsors, our city employees that assisted this weekend at the Juneteenth Festival. Saw a lot of folks in the audience at the event this weekend. ESO performed. We had gospel explosion. It was a two-day event. So looking forward, this is, let me back up a little bit. This is an event that has occurred in downtown Elgin in Festival Park many years ago. This is the first year it's been brought back in a number of years and had nothing but very positive, positive feedback from not only the vendors, but the residents and folks from out of town that came. So looking forward to next year and really had a good time. So thank you.
Anything else from the council?
I have one real quick one, and that's in memory of my friend Bob Gilliam. And Bob Gilliam told me a long time ago that city councils make no good decisions after four hours.[1659.04]